All right. Good evening, everybody. I now call to order the regular meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority of Tuesday, July 16, 2024. Please stand while a video of the National Anthem is playing and then remain standing for the [inaudible]. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. Thank you. Now is the time for our moment of solemn expression, and we're very pleased to be led in that today by the pastor emeritus of Calvary Chapel, once again, Dave Mann.
Thank you, Mayor. Shall we pray? God, we come together and ask your blessing upon our city of Costa Mesa this evening, upon our meeting, the business issues and decisions before us. Bless our mayor, the city council members, all the city officials and department staff. Bless our police department, chief of police, the entire police force and staff. We ask that you bless the fire department, the chief, captains, the entire fire and response staff, and fire and rescue. Mesa Water District City Operations, bless them, Lord, and all the business that represent our here in Costa Mesa, and all the residents that reside here in Costa Mesa. Bless these families. Bless all of it, Lord. Jesus, we pray now for your blessing upon not only ourselves and Costa Mesa, but we pray also for our neighboring cities and the entire United States to guide, to protect, and to keep us all united and safe. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Mann, or Pastor Emeritus, ma'am. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Mr. Mayor, the record will reflect that all council is present except for Council Member Mar.
Thank you very much. And then next up is our City Attorney Closed Session Report. Ms. Barlow, do you have a report? Okay. There it goes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action out of closed session today.
Okay. Now, we don't have any presentations tonight, but we're going to make up for it on August 6th because, right now, as we speak, there are two Little League teams playing for the section final championship after winning the district 62 championship. Three teams won the district 62 championship, and we had to have a 13U team, one of our concierge clerks has a child on the team, a boy on the team, that are playing for Pony, the Pony International Championship in Carlsbad this weekend. So look for that. It's on social media, and hopefully they'll all come in on August 6th, and we'll have a big baseball night. So, but for tonight, we don't have any presentations, so let's go right to public comment. Public comments, the rules on that are you can speak about anything that's not on the agenda. You can also speak about consent calendar items at this time, and you get three minutes. At two minutes, you'll hear a sound, and then you'll have one minute to wrap up. After three minutes, the mic will cut off, and then we'll go to Zoom after we're done with the people in the chambers, and then the same rules apply. You can speak about anything that's not on the agenda and/or consent calendar items. You get three minutes, and listen to me. I'll cut you off at three minutes. So, every, anybody want to speak in the chambers on public comment? All right, we have some movement. If you could line up on either side just so we can go back and forth, it's a little bit more efficient. Yes. Ms. Hendricks, do you have a presentation?
Yes, I do.
Okay, good. Let's queue that up. And give Ms. Hendricks three minutes. Whenever you're ready.
Oh, okay. My name is Kim Hendricks. I'm with Fairview Park Alliance, and we're very concerned about the vote City Council made on May 2, 2023, to allow glider planes in Fairview Park to launch and fly in the Vernal Pool Complex watershed, ignoring recommendations from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, city contracted biologists, city committee, and community members. The president of the Harbor Soaring Society at the time, Mr. Matt Garcia, claimed that it was only city staff that did not want them flying in Fairview Park, and all other agencies supported them being there. This is simply not true, and you knew it since the recommendations were included in the staff report. I have included their recommendations in my PowerPoint presentation, which I'm trying to move to the next slide. I don't know why. And there goes my time. Okay, so I've included it from California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Next slide. Also, next, this is from the contracted biologist who spent 14 years. Next slide. And this is from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, whom I emailed the next day asking if this was true, and she said no, and it was her understanding. They were recommending to have the flying field relocated. This year agreement with HSS started in July 2023 and would have come before you this July or August. Next slide, please, for review. But Fairview Park Alliance has learned that the city manager extended the agreement for another six months without a public announcement or public input. This is another six months of degradation of the Vernal Pool watershed that will kick the birds out. Why was this extension made behind closed doors with the flyers? Fairview Park has documented the glider plane presence in Fairview Park, and they have been taking out keystone species, fascicle tar plant, in a biologically sensitive area, trampling the native plants outside their designated area and making new trails in the Vernal Pool watershed. This is a change.org. Right after that motion, a petition was started by a Costa Mesa resident, and in two weeks there were 380 signatures. Next slide. HSS is a handful of Costa Mesa residents. Next slide. And you see, they have 190 likes. Next slide. And Fairview Park Alliance has 800 members. Next slide. And this is how their permits have gone down, their membership yearly. So if they do so much for the community, why is no one interested? Next slide. This is a handful of hobbyists. It's always the same handful. Next slide. And this is them destroying a keystone species. Next slide. And this is in 2009 when the city was helping them, Mr. Staples was helping them degrade the Vernal Pool watershed with a bulldozer. Next slide. And they stomped it and put water on it and basically tried to destroy it. Next slide. And this is the fascicle tar plant in front of their bin, which they destroyed. Next slide. And with a recent Fairview Park master plan update.
All right. Thank you very much. So, yes, you may go. I have to turn on your mic. Yes, please.
Good evening, Mayor Stevens and City Council members. My name is Alberta Marashadi. I'm a Costa Mesa resident and homeowner and a dual business owner here in Costa Mesa for photography and beekeeping. The reason for my being here today is to ask for your support in changing the bee ordinance, which is 3-18 in our city. I have been involved in beekeeping since 2010. We have, when I had a hive rescued from my front yard and volunteered a local beekeeping business. Then I started my own business, A. Marashadi Beekeeping. Now I legally manage my own hives, rescue honeybees, and relocate them, and also sell local honey. And I rescue for both residential and commercial properties. I continue to educate myself and those I meet about the importance and the value of the honeybee. When I get a call for a swarm or a hive that took up residence, it is my responsibility to educate and help the homeowner or the business make a decision about saving the bees. All but one of the 155, 75 rescues that I have done, only one has been rowdy, that I decided I couldn't rescue. But all the others have been calm, and that's what most honeybees are. Honeybees are docile by nature, and we can save them and instead of exterminate them, because homeowners pay a lot of money to have them exterminated. And really, most, like I said, most honeybees are docile by nature. As an active member of BASS, the Bee Association of Southern California, that includes from, you know, the inland empire and up north, all the way down to San Diego, you know, our goal is to educate people about the value of honeybees and about their temperament. And it is commonly thought that, actually, a lot of people are allergic to them, but actually, the, there is a very small, small amount of people that are allergic to them. Beekeeping is legal in our neighboring cities, in Santa Ana and also in Irvine. It's also legal in Fullerton, Laguna Beach, Laguna Woods, Laguna Hills, San Clemente, Tuscan, Westminster, Yorba Linda. Even New York City with their, you know, dense population, legalizes beekeeping, and we all live harmoniously with it. So I asked you, why can't Costa Mesa be a bee-friendly city? In closing, I ask you to change the Costa Mesa bee ordinance and legalize beekeeping in Costa Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Priscilla Rocco, Costa Mesa resident. Thank you, Councilwoman Mar and Reynolds, for supporting an ordinance allowing beekeeping in Costa Mesa. If I am any example, I think this ordinance will apply mostly to people who already have bees in their garden, whether in a trash can like mine or in a proper hive where the honey is harvested. These honeybees were attracted to my garden because it is full of traditional fruit trees, fruit and vegetable plants, and lots and lots of flowers. It's like many gardens, and I, they like my garden, and I like that they pollinate my garden. My goal was always been to give the bees a home and all the pollen and nectar they want, so they can raise more bees for the environment. I realize there will be a process to go through and fees to be paid with this ordinance, but I'm willing to do this so I can continue raising bees. The process for attracting native bees is not as automatic, but just as important because they are also declining due to habitat loss. Since native bees and native plants evolve together, you must plant the right native plants to attract native bees. I have gardened for more than 50 years, but this is a learning process for me, as I'm sure it is for others. Quite a while ago, I started planting more drought-tolerant plants, and now I'm transitioning to more natives. The more folks plant native plants, the more I hope we will see native bees making a comeback. It's mostly an issue of educating people. Some of the questions, some questions, whether the native bees will be challenged by my honeybees, I don't know. I guess I'll have to learn as I plant more and more natives. But I tend to think that if I have the right mix of natives and other plants, things will work out. The whole idea is that gardens can be planted to make, make up for the habitat loss for creatures. Many people are planting native milkweed in the gardens to help the monarchs. Once the neighbors saw the monarchs in my garden every summer, they planted native whelpweed to help support the species and enjoy the beauty. Now, here are a few facts you may not know. Worldwide, there are over 20,000 species of bees. Seventy-five percent of all bees are solitary bees, and 70% of those make their nests in the ground, in vacant rodent holes and other cavities. Solitary bees don't produce honey. They eat pollen and nectar and pollinate many native plants. The two types of bees that make honey are social bees and that live in groups. Bumblebees are native to North.
Thank you very much, Priscilla. Yes, you have the floor.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Sandy Tobaco. I'm a resident of Garden Grove, but I'm here to support Alberta and the beekeeping ordinance getting possibly changed and upgraded. I've been a member of the Beekeepers Association of Southern California for the past 18 years, and one of our main jobs is to educate people on bees, because it seems like the fear of bees is because of lack of knowledge. You know, they get, they hear the horror stories that make it to the news, and there are some bad bees out there, but the bees that we manage are not, and they get categorized into that. So we want you to keep an open mind and an open heart, because one out of every three bites of food you eat is because the honeybees have pollinated it. And so we need to be thankful for them, be understanding. They are the most gentle creature in the insect world. They're the only insect that does not prey on other insects. Every other insect is an enemy to another insect, except for the honeybee. They want to do their own thing. They're gentle. They're calm. And so I wanted to also just remind you that there are going to be bees in Costa Mesa, whether or not it is legal to keep them. Bees will be here. They travel miles and miles to get their forage. And so if it is legal here, it means that the bees that are in boxes are being watched to make sure that they're gentle, being watched to make sure that they have enough food sources, that they are just calm and safe to be within the city. And should they end up not being calm, they will be removed from the city. That's what we do in all the cities. And we requeen them so that they become gentle again. So there's steps to take to ensure that the bees that are here stay calm, and we are, as a club, willing to present to different cities and organizations seminars about bees, education about bees, explaining how helpful they are and what you can do as homeowners to help provide water sources, what to do if they come to your house, how to stay calm. There's just a lot of things that people, once they learn this, then it's not such a big scary thing. It's, it's nature in action, and it's a beautiful thing. So I'm just here to help encourage you to consider this, because a lot of cities are coming on board across the country, but especially here in Southern California. We have a gold mine of bees here, and we want to help nurture and protect them and help them do the good job that they want to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Stevens, City Council, City Manager. My name is Alfie Sanchez. I'm the event director for the city Costa Mesa Grand Prix and 5K Fun Run that we'll be hosting this Sunday. We are doing kind of a ribbon cutting, so we wanted to personally invite you guys. I know with the chamber, so I know Julianne has got that out there on the site, so just definitely wanted to personally invite you guys, and hopefully we can get a few of you guys out there. We do have a live stream, so it will be streamed on YouTube, so that'll be something that we will be doing as well. And also want to thank Sergeant Barnes, who set up our police that will be out there, and then we'll be donating some money to the Explorer Program. They're going to have some explorers out there kind of helping out. So it's great that the community has been coming and getting involved. We're hoping to grow this event as we keep doing it. We're definitely looking to be doing it twice a year, so early March and then sometime in July, August. We definitely will stay, I know we were talking to Ms. Reynolds about the July 7 event that you guys had. Well, we were looking to do July 7, but we did move it to later, after the July, 4th of July event that you guys had. So, but again, we'd like to have you guys out there, and thank you guys for allowing us to host this event in your beautiful city, and we're looking to continue to keep doing this. And thank you for your time. And we do support bees, too.
Hold on, hold on one second.
Yes, sir.
So I just want to make sure you say, so where is it specifically and the timing?
Okay, so the ribbon cutting that we're doing is going to be about between 1:00 and 1:20. The address is 3555 Harbor Gateway. So we're like on Sunflower Highland, right by Soco Mix, kind of in that area. Generally, we'll be racing in that area. So when you come down Sunflower, just basically follow the signs that say Event Parking.
Great.
So, but then it's also on the website as well, for you guys, for your website, as well as Chamber.
Thank you.
So, no problem. Thank you.
See you on Sunday.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, ma'am.
Yeah, my name is Diana Semmer, and I live in Lakewood, California, and I'm here to support the bees and the reason for the ordinance, and I think education is really important. A lot of our honeybees are not surviving. Last year, with the numbers, they're saying colony collapse was 50%. The reason I got involved with bees is because I have lots of fruit trees, avocado trees. I've got at least 12 different types of fruits. Major concern for me is the homeless population, food insecurity. We need these honeybees for pollination, for our crops. Lakewood, the reason I wanted to show up and tell you is last week Lakewood just got an ordinance to start backyard beekeeping in R1. Some of the points that came out during the study session, several of us were invited to the council meeting for the study session. Some of the things that came out is LA County is 4,000 square feet. The people who have signed up for permits in LA County is 364. Orange County is 800 square feet. Not everybody wants to be a beekeeper. Beekeeping is a very expensive hobby. I did a study for one of our council members, and it's going to cost at least $1,500 to get your initial start up. And like I said, the survival rate of the bees is not high. We used some of, Fullerton had a best practice for managed beekeeping, and a lot of the ordinance from what the city of Lakewood is doing is producing a best practice, and there's guidelines for people to be a beekeeper. You have to be associated with a beekeeping association. You have to take beekeeping classes. There's a difference between managed bees and feral bees. A lot of beekeepers put managed bees inside their colonies because they're nice. You can basically open the colony without a suit on, and they're very gentle bees. The difference between non-managed bees is the ones that are up in the tree that can be very defensive. Bees will only be defensive most of the time is if you're going into their colony. So there's a lot of misconception out there in the public. Bees do not normally, especially honeybees, attack people and kill them. So, and I think Boris is going to speak a lot on that. I would welcome any council member who's interested. I will give you my phone number. I would be glad to give you a tour. I was illegally keeping bees in Lakewood for about eight years. I have never had.
All right. Thank you. Yes.
Mayor, before I begin, at your discretion, am I able to share pictures to the council?
Yeah. I, we can give, give them to the clerk. She'll make sure to get them to all of us. Do we have, can we put it on the Elmo? Just hang on, hang on. We'll get you your three minutes. Is it one photo? Is it one?
I made eight copies.
Oh, yeah. We could just, why don't you just?
Nine. I mean, I made about nine.
We could just take one, pass it down.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hold on. Well, she'll get them to us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. Look at there. Thank you, Councilmember Harper.
Mayor.
Yes. Should we project it on the Elmo? Do you have one? Madam Clerk? Do you have one of these? Does the Elmo work? Do you guys know what I'm talking about? We have an Elmo. It's the thing right there. Does anybody know how to use it? Okay.
Thank you so much for the technical support.
Yeah, no problem. Why don't you, yeah, rotate it up there like that? Good. It has to focus now. Can we? Uh-oh. We lost it. What happened?
That's pretty clear.
I can't see it. There we go. That's good. Okay, good enough. Great. Can the public see that on their screen? Can you see it? Good. All right. You have the floor.
Hi, Mayor. My name is Roberto. I'm the Leadership Development Director with Resilience Orange County, and I just want to thank city staff, Sergio Escobar, who was, we did a know your rights training on tenant. Tenant know your rights are, the city council passed the tenant protection ordinance back in November, and we had invited the city. We had over 50 community members come to this event out in the Mesa del Mar neighborhood. These are some of the pictures out there. I just wanted you to show them and just thank Sergio for being there to provide the city's resources in relationship to that ordinance. And, you know, thank you for continuing to support the Latino community and tenants through these types of policies. I also wanted to speak on, you know, just your continued effort to expand local government to the Latino community. I know Spanish, the YouTube in Spanish is an important feature for folks to tune in. And going back to the know your rights training, I, we actually collaborated with Las Promotoras de Salud, who's out here in the audience as well, and Public Law Center to conduct that training. Back to the YouTube in Spanish, if you are able to make that possible, that would be really great, as well as publishing the agenda in advance. I know the agenda was published on Friday, but if we can pass a policy to get the agenda out sooner. Our organization is hosting an Affordable Housing and Tenant Rights Convention in Orange County on Sunday, September 29, here in Costa Mesa at the Norma Herzog Community Center. I welcome you all to attend. I also emailed Councilmember Chavez for the Nuevo Caihonen. I think we're agreeing on a date for November, August 17. So thank you for communicating back, and we'll square away the date. And the last picture has to do with this crosswalk here on Placentia and Center Street. This morning at 7:00, 8:00, from 7:00 to 8:00 a.m., I was outside that intersection taking pictures. I felt like a sociologist seeing, I counted 15 community members, youth and adults, seniors, running across this street. And so these are just some pictures, three pictures of someone on a bicycle, someone with their dog, and then someone just running across, and these types of access points. Some of the community members just crossed. Others were accessing the octopus. And so I also sent you all an email with video recording. These are just, you know, still pictures just for, I was not able to submit this prior to 12 o'clock, so thank you, the mayor, for allowing me to introduce these pictures to you today. So please, if you can look at installing a crosswalk there, I would really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me. My name is John Vesely. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am a bee rescue specialist, a beekeeper, and an educator, working in the South Bay area. Changing the fear narrative is big, big about beekeeping anybody. As a beekeeping rescue person, I get caught talking about bees and bee rescue with the signage on my truck. I spend as much time rescuing bees as I do educating the public, whether it's out in front of the residents with the Amazon, the mailman, the residents walking their pets, at the gas station, the 7-Eleven, wherever I might be, I spend quite a bit of time educating people about bees. A little movie came out in the '70s about sharks, and we took that to heart and went and killed all the great white sharks in the ocean. Then people wondered why we had all these dead whales and dolphins washing up on the beaches, because the garbage disposals of the oceans were being killed off. We changed that narrative, and that came from one movie in the '70s, in that fear narrative. We're living with quote-unquote killer bees, aggressive bees. I've never seen bees with baseball bats going down the street, taking out people. They are usually protective of their home and their colony. It's when humans invade or do something. As a rescuer, I get the people that have sprayed them with Raid or gone after them with a garden hose, do everything they can to upset them, can't get rid of them, so I end up getting the phone call. We, managing bees as responsible beekeepers, I'm also a Lakewood resident. We just got the ordinance changed, setting in some practices and putting some teeth in that ordinance. Like you said, it's about $1,500 just to enter. We're taught to be sustainable, taught about being resistant or resilient, about being community members. Nobody thinks about how to put a plant in the ground and put worms on it, but what about pollination? That's such a big part of our food source. So taking that into consideration, I also encourage anybody in the council or in the audience, look for one of us. If you want to put on a bee suit and walk through an apiary and see what the day in life is and see how these bees act in a managed situation versus the fear that we hear about in the trees. But we encourage any of-- Anybody can reach out to any of us for putting on a bee suit and coming out and visiting with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Boris Baer, and I'm a researcher. I'm researching honeybees for 34 years now. I'm currently the professor for pollinator health at UC Riverside, and I'm also the director of the Center for Integrative Bee Research. These are very important. I think you got that more than 60 crops of agricultural interest depend on pollination, about the third of what you eat, especially plants that are really help-- provide health, like vitamins and things like that. And we took these pollination services for granted, especially in California, which is the largest agricultural producer of crops in the US. But we have seen massive declines. Some of my colleagues already mentioned that, like, we lost almost half of the bees. I mean, just let that sink in, half of the bees last year. And I think in the current times, politically and globally, like, food security and the availability of affordable food has become an issue of national security. And the bees play an absolute crucial role. So for me, everyone who responsibly keep bees is actually a hero. And it is something that needs a lot of kind of education and a lot of experience to do. So what we do is like at UC, we research local bees. And what we find is that you are basically extremely lucky because you have a local, unique genotype of bees here in Southern California that is tolerant against most of those environmental factors that kill other bees in the US. So for my English, you can probably hear that I'm not a native-- not from the US. I'm actually originally from Switzerland, and I'm just kind of jealous again because California got lucky again. First, you have the gold, then you had the oil, then you had the silicon, and now you have the bees. And that's why I'm here. So these bees are really important, and these bees will play a crucial role in the future. And I have-- What I can offer is I can help if you want to kind of develop an ordinance. What we promote is responsible beekeeping, so that people know what we do, we educate people. We also, for example, offer training courses, crash courses for police officers, if they experience bees in their surrounding, how to deal with that. So if there's any interest in that, I'm more than open to help you with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Eileen Aragon. I am a resident of Costa Mesa. I am here to support the honeybees. I am a member of the Orange County Beekeepers Association, and I have learned myself and educated myself a lot about bees. I have been a member for several years now, and I also educate different residents around the neighborhood and others. I have done the Maginology and also discovery days for children and for their parents to come around. We educate different people in the city with regards to bees. Costa Mesa desires to create an eco-friendly, green, sustainable, conscious city, which goes hands in hands with legalizing bees. Bees are vital pollinators and need to populate our urban gardens, our small farms, and our many trees. I also have about over a dozen fruit trees in my home that I would like for our bees to be able to pollinate as well. I ask for your help to change the Costa Mesa bee ordinance and legalize beekeeping in Costa Mesa and give me, a resident of Costa Mesa, the opportunity to be a backyard beekeeper. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor?
Good evening. My name is Barbara Berimhoff, and I'm basically here because I love to eat. The reason that I say this is because bees pollinate every third bite of food we eat. So when you go have dinner, your fruit and vegetables that you eat have been pollinated by honeybees, every third bite of them. You're vitamin-rich food as well, especially that. So I would just like to say, please allow beekeeping in this-- in Costa Mesa. It is important because the 10% hobbyist beekeepers that keep bees in the US, they have a variety of genotypes of bees here that are really important to improve the gene pool of the bees that are managed by the big farming beekeepers that come here to bring their bees to pollinate the almonds. So the mixture of the bees that are farmed and the bees that are-- that live here wild in the trees, that mixture is actually probably going to save beekeeping here in the US. I'm convinced that this is an important project, and that's why I work in it. As you hear, I've got the same accent as my husband Boris Baer. I work at UC Riverside as well. I've done-- I've been in bee research for over 20 years, and I really do think you have a goldmine here. I'm absolutely convinced. We work together with five beekeeping clubs here in Southern California, and I'm happy to invite you to the conference we organize on the 21st of September. If you'd like to come, get to know the people, get to know the population, see how seriously we take the health and safety of beekeeping. This is something that is most important to me. We have best practices that can be implemented. You can copy them. You can use them here. We want the bees to be gentle. We want the people to be responsible and to know what they're doing, and that's really important. If you legalize beekeeping, you have more control over it than if you just let people keep bees illegally. So thank you very much for your time, and I wish you have a very nice dinner, thinking of the bees. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we're going to move to Zoom for our public comments on Zoom. Same thing, remember, three minutes, and you'll-- I don't think you'll hear anything, but just keep it to three minutes, please.
Phone number ending in 613, please.
613, you have the floor.
Yes, hi. Can you please show the picture that I sent you earlier of the car blocking Placentia Avenue at West 19th Street?
Yes, it's up.
We got it up there, Chris.
Okay. So this picture was taken during rush hour, and this is another ripple effect of the terrible single-lane laning of West 19th Street. This project that you guys have brought onto the west side-- And can you explain this to the whole screen? This project on West 19th Street has just been an absolute failure. It hasn't made anything better. There are nobody-- There's really nobody that uses the bike lane that you created. You've created a bunch of angry drivers. It's been a huge waste of our money that you took away a lane. I believe you guys are climate change avengers. And, you know, when you make cars sit in traffic, you're putting more of the CO2 in the atmosphere, which, by the way, is not a bad thing. But it's been an absolute failure of a project. Now, we're getting into election season, and believe you and me, this is going to be a topic in the election. So as we get closer and closer, the temperature is going to rise more and more, and fingers are going to be pointed at members of this council who supported this. This thing needs to be undone, need to fix it naked the way it was. Secondly, I want to talk about the attitude of development on this council versus the attitude of development in a city. You guys are completely out of touch with what the residents want. Remember, you work for the residents. You don't work for people that don't live here. You're not going to solve a housing crisis that doesn't exist. The housing crisis is nonexistent. People don't get to live where they want. That's what you're trying to solve. It's expensive to live here, and those of us that do live here are extremely fortunate. But you're going to just destroy the community with high-density projects. I mean, absolutely destruction. The first two projects have added bumper-to-bumper 60 and 1/2 miles of permanent traffic for, what, 200 affordable units? You've just destroyed the city streets. And the people that move into those units once they're in, they're not moving out. So you're not solving any problems. You're creating more problems. And the parking requirements that you guys are trying to push are also terrible. This council is going to destroy the city, and I hope residents wake up and understand who's responsible for these decisions and this is leading in our community, because, again, you guys both have destroyed our community.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Who's next?
No further speakers. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Closed public comment. Now, we're going to go to council member comments, suggestions, and committee reports. So first up is from District 2, Councilmember Lauren Gamaros. Councilmember, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a few things I would like to talk about this evening. We had some great events, and we have some coming up I want to talk about. Fourth of July, of course, was pretty crazy, as it always is, and I just want to thank our police and fire department for being there for us. There's a lot going on, and I know it's a very busy night for both of those departments. I also want to thank city staff for putting on an absolutely fabulous July 3rd show. If anyone attended, it was probably twice as big as it was last year and twice as big as it was the year before that. It goes uncontested that it's probably one of the biggest free, great events that you can attend. There's free food, free music, there's games you can play, and there's lots of great people there to enjoy. So I just want a big shout out to staff for putting that together. We also have this little event that usually goes on starting about mid-July. If you haven't heard of it, it's called the Orange County Fair. It starts July 19th, and it goes to August 18th. So if you have a chance, bring your kids. It's a great way to blow a few hundred dollars on a corn dog. So show up. It's a lot of fun. I also want to say that we have movies in the park scheduled. We have a great show coming July 20th. It's going to be at the Downtown Recreation Backyard at 1860 Anaheim Avenue in Costa Mesa. If you haven't seen Trolls, you're missing out. Bring your kids. It's a great time. And last but not least, I just want to let everyone know that we're going to be having a community review for the Fairview Development Center, July 24th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, at the Norma Herzog Center. July 25th, 6:00 to 8:00 at St. John Baptist School at the multipurpose room at 1021 Baker Street. And lastly, July 31st, 6:00 to 8:00 at-- It's going to be a visual workshop in English and in Spanish. I don't have a location, but if you go to the city website, it'll tell you exactly how that's going to take place. Other than that, I want to wish our Little Leaguers good luck playing baseball, and hopefully we get to have a celebration in their honor. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Next up, from Councilmember-- Councilmember Don Harper from District 1.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. And thank you for the people that came and spoke tonight on all the subjects they did, and especially the beekeeper folks. I didn't realize there's so-- You're so organized, and I appreciate the information. If I were to run for council again, I would run on a beekeeping platform with you. I think you have a lot of support here, and I certainly encourage you, if there's information you want to get to council, email me, email the council. And again, thank you for coming. And, you know, I never mention this, and I should mention it. The Slammers Soccer Club in-- It's based in Costa Mesa here. They've got a 20-year history, and they, every year, send teams to the national championship. I never bring this up. For years-- And they are actually the club that has the most national championships of any club in the last 20 years. And this year, it's a mundane thing for them. Out of the five great-- Of the five age levels, they won another national championship. Sometimes they win two or three, and that's across the entire United States. So I want to congratulate the Slammers. My wife is involved with them, and I-- My daughter went through the Slammers organization, and I'm just going to mention them because I never do. So thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for doing that. Let's bring them in. Let's bring them in and give them some recognition. Okay, so next up is from District 5, Councilmember Arlosh Reynolds.
Yeah, thank you. Just on the beekeeping item, my understanding is that staff is working on an updated ordinance. Maybe we can just get an update on the timing of when we expect that to be in front of council. And on the public comment about the intersection of Placentia and Center, thank you for providing the data on that, too. This came up, I think it was like six years ago or so, where a resident around was asking about the same area. I know we've had a death in the vicinity not too long ago. Actually, in the photos that staff-- Or that was shared, you can see a boarded-up area in the corner of the residential building that's boarded up because maybe two months ago or so, a vehicle collided into this residential space, very nearly missing a person who was sleeping on the couch in their living room. So there's some safety challenges here. I would like to have us explore what options there are to slow speeds, make a safer crossing, especially for folks who are trying to catch the bus, who likely don't have any other option but to take a bus and use their feet and use a bike, for example. And just on that note, you know, as you residents in the city, visitors to the city continue to see, adjustments to our street designs, green paint on the ground, that really is designed to improve safety for residents and visitors in the community, many of whom have no choice but to walk or bike or get to a bus stop to take the bus to work. So there's many of us who choose to bike because it's good for our health. There are many people who have no other choice but to move without a car. So all of the work that we're doing is intended to keep those people safe. The photo that was shared with cars blocking an intersection, I know we're-- We have an ordinance on our agenda later today that affirms that that behavior is illegal, and I hope that we can correct that bad driving behavior. Okay. A few updates from some committees. There was a Fairview Park Steering Committee meeting last week. I wanted to share that-- Oh, Brenda, can you bring that up? Perfect. Okay. So wanted to share first that I thought staff and the consultant team did an excellent job on the presentation. It was a really, really well-organized meeting, very well-attended. Just wanted to share for council and the public here, the schedule that was shared at that meeting through the end of the master plan process for Fairview Park. And I want to highlight September, which is the month where they intend to have another community workshop. There was a request that I agree with to try to set that date as soon as possible so folks can get that in their calendars. And also want to reiterate another request, which was to really make an effort to engage the youth in our community and especially our high school students. We made a connection with Newport Mesa, and I know those staff are really interested in engaging on this because it's a great educational opportunity. We'll go to the next one. Tomorrow is the third quarterly meeting for the Mobile Home Advisory Committee. This committee had a rocky start, getting started through COVID, but it's really gained a lot of momentum. The folks, the staff, and members of this committee have been working really hard to pull together relevant information for residents in our mobile home communities. They've developed this webpage with FAQs and some key-- Links to key resources. They've also developed, with the help of Mr. Brock Coward-- Thank you for his work-- --a really good flyer that I-- We're going to be mailing out to every single resident in a mobile home community. So that's-- I think they're all in districts 4, 5, and 6. So just really good work that I wanted to make sure folks are aware of. And once all of those materials are finalized, I think it'd be really great to have a brief presentation at council just on the materials that were put together and the outreach plan. And then lastly, we got a note today on the August 15th Fair Housing Workshop. I learned a lot when I went to my first Fair Housing Workshop. I think these are excellent workshops. I'm really glad that we have this partnership with the Fair Housing Foundation. I do want to make sure that-- I know Fair Housing Foundation shares state law. I want to make sure that we're also sharing at these events Costa Mesa's specific tenant protection ordinance, which is a bit better than state law. So I want to make sure that residents who attend this workshop are aware of that information. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And once all of those materials are finalized, I think it'd be really great to have a brief presentation at council just on the materials that were put together in the outreach plan. And then lastly, we got a note today on the August fifteenth Fair Housing Workshop. I learned a lot when I went to my first Fair Housing Workshop. I think these are excellent workshops. I'm really glad that we have this partnership with the Fair Housing Foundation. I do want to make sure that, I know Fair Housing Foundation shares state law. I want to make sure that we're also sharing at these events Costa Mesa's specific tenant protection ordinance, which is a bit better than state law. So want to make sure that residents who attend this workshop are aware of that information. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up from District Four, Councilmember Manuel Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, and thank you, everyone, for joining us today. I know we compete with a lot of activities during summer, so thank you guys for joining us. I'll first address comments from, on public comment, then I'll talk about two announcements briefly. First one, thank you for all of the B folks for coming out today and very insightful information. I, too, am interested in learning more. So if anyone wants to reach out to me, I'm happy to do a tour, learn more about the ordinances of the cities. I think it's something good to do for our environment. In regards to the intersection on Placentia Center Street, I also agree, we should be looking at that intersection. I know it's difficult for residents to turn left on that industry when they're going to Placentia. But more importantly, the fact we have people jaywalking, it just demonstrates that people are going to use it anyway, so let's do it safely. And to the, remember the public that had a question about the green striping on Placentia Boulevard? That was actually one of the things I pushed for heavily for my district, District Four, which, as you know, is the heart of, of Costa Mesa. A lot of residents have access to parks and that bike path takes people to Fairview Park on a safe designation route, but also potentially down the line will take folks to Vanning Ranch Conservancy Rental Preserve, which will be open space for people to recreate and use. So I don't think we're going to go backwards when it comes to being, making sure folks are safe on bike paths. I think if anything, we're going to be more aggressive, making sure people are safer. The advent of youth using e-bikes is not going to stop. It's going to get more and more accessible. And I think it's prudent for us to keep our residents and our students safe in Costa Mesa. So I know it's a little bit inconvenient and I acknowledge that, but I think some of the inconvenience is not worth someone's life. Or, let me repeat that again. I think someone being inconvenienced is not as important as someone being safe in the community. With that, I do want to make an announcement as usual for Costa Mesa three one one. If you see any blight in the community, such as graffiti, people have, you know, like mattresses out in the community, you can use the Costa Mesa three one one app. This app reports to city staff and they can pick up these items or remove graffiti. So if you see anything in Costa Mesa that needs to be a little upkeep, use the Costa Mesa three one one app. It's on the App Store and on the Android Store. And finally, just wanted to make an announcement for everyone in the public. I want to thank them fully for appointing me to the OCTA Community Advisory Committee. We meet quarterly and we discuss policy changes in OCTA. So if anyone has any complaints, things they want us to improve, please, please reach out to me. Happy to be the voice for you on that committee making positive changes. One of the things I'm looking forward to doing is better, advocating for better bus services that are more functional and efficient because we know a lot of residents use those bus services as their main mode of transportation. And I also want to ensure that we keep providing our students, both community college and high school, middle school, with those free bus passes to let them go to school that's not as convenient for them. So thanks everyone for joining us today and have a great rest of your evening.
All right. Thank you very much. So next up from District Six, Mayor Pro Tem Jeff Harlan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to thank and congratulate again Urban Workshop. This is a large, it's a workshop. I mean, easiest thing to describe it. They celebrated their ten-year anniversary in Costa Mesa this past weekend. The mayor and I and Yves Torres were there representing the city for the ribbon-cutting ceremony. It's a fascinating place and it's one of the, you know, beauties of Costa Mesa. There's so much here that you just learn about. Like I said, they've been there ten years. They offer basically shop classes, welding, woodworking, automotive in a thirty thousand square foot facility for adults as well as kids. Great to get kids involved using their, their brains and their hands in something tactile. What was fascinating to me was learning from the owner that a number of businesses have started and have grown from this facility. And it's an amazing array of things to do. The workshop hosted a number of the people who actually make the, the goods there on display. There were guitars, surfboards, I don't know, the mayor can chime in on the other stuff, but just a, a wide array. It's really quite impressive. So if you're interested, they offer classes, they offer memberships. I encourage you to check it out. It's on Clinton Avenue off Red Hill near the airport. And then lastly, as if there's not enough entertainment in Costa Mesa during the summer, Concerts in the Park at Fairview Park started last Tuesday. It's every Tuesday in July. I think the first band was Yachty by Nature last week. Tonight, it is Flashback Heart Attack. So if you're bored of listening to us, I won't take any offense if you get up and leave. Next week is the perennial favorite, Tijuana Dogs and wrapping it up with the Pacific Symphony. It's a great event. Everybody has a wonderful time at the park, excellent music, excellent food, just again, great summer activity. So I encourage you to go.
So that, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So that, yeah, Urban Workshop is really quite a place. So it's been there, as he said, in Clinton and it's in, Councilmember Gamaros' district. He's been there to visit, too. And not only, I mean, they start these, these different businesses start there and the guy who owns it, Steve, said the businesses have sold in ten years, one hundred and seventy million dollars worth of revenue out of that place. And what happens is like, let's say you've got a, one guy sold bags, could be backpacks, could be anything. One guy sold guitars, all kinds of things that they sell. And just imagine anything you can make out of metal, wood, cloth, anything you can make, silk screening, you name it, and it's all there. Go over there and check it out. They have classes for adults, they have, but then if you want to sell that product in the marketplace, you can go and use their facility and use their place and use their storage and then before you have the capital to get into a lease. And so it's an amazing, he said it's an incubator that never wanted to be an incubator. And it's like, you know, even my wife, I was telling her about it and she goes, oh, I've already, always wanted to do woodworking. And so she might even take a class there. The other thing is they have, they have one of the only places where you can get certified as a welder. So a lot of people, they go there and they get the skills they need to get promotions or get the certifications. Anyway, don't get me started on the Urban Workshop. It made an impression on me, obviously. Thank you to the staff and thank you to all the people. We had, I think, I'm going to say more than ten thousand people at the July third event, you know, all free, all fun. Thank you for the firefighters, for the hot dogs. Thank you for the PD for bringing out the Bearcat. Everybody loved the, and it was a completely peaceful, thanks for keeping the peace, the PD, just being there was amazing. Everybody participated. Cotty Petrie Norris was there, of course. Katrina Foley was center stage. It was really great. And the, the Tijuana Dogs played for their, they said for their largest crowd ever at that event, largest crowd ever. So thank you to everybody. We'll be back. We booked the Tijuana Dogs already for July third next year. So on the, a few things regarding the fire department. On, this seems like a long time ago, but we haven't had a meeting since. On June twenty-third, you may remember that we had a brush fire in Fairview Park slash Talbot Park, right where they kind of meet. And the fire department, working with the Orange County Fire Authority, put that out in approximately an hour. Incredible work that they did on that. It was a mutual unified command. The PD was involved, of course, and they did a marvelous job. That was a Sunday afternoon, which is always the perfect storm for everybody because everybody's chilling out, maybe had a few beers, this and that. And the last thing you want to hear is there's a brush fire at Fairview Park. But thank you really for doing a great job. Thanks to the department, both departments. And then shortly after that, keeping with the fire department, there were two structure fires. One was at Electric Bike Company and then one was at a, a apartment. And again, the fire department came in, they contained those fires in both of those places really well. The interesting thing about those fires is the origin of those fires was an electric, in both cases, electric bike batteries. So one thing I think, we're going to talk about electric bikes today. I think we could use some public service announcements about the safe storage of electric bikes and specifically electric bike batteries because they seem to, at least in those two situations, have created a hazard. Getting to the public works, I take Adams Avenue constantly. I spent half my life on Adams Avenue. It is beautiful. I mean, it's great. It's like the green paint that Councilmember Reynolds was mentioning is there. They've got signage there. I'm not even, I didn't even know I needed to know the things that are in the signage. I've been living there for twenty-five years. I knew there was a light there, but now I really know there's a light there because there's a sign telling me that I'm a light there. There was a median. Now there's a sign telling me there is a median, so I feel a lot safer. And the last thing I'll say is, not only is the fair starting, but on Friday is Costa Mesa Day at the fair. Every time that it's the first day of, of the fair, it's always Costa Mesa Day. Not every city has their own day, but we have our own day and it's the first day. So if you want to come, you can, and, and we'll be there at noon to kick off the fair. We do this every year. Councilmembers come out, staff comes out, they announce our names and they play the National, sing the National Anthem and we have a little ceremony and then we go have a good time at the fair. So come on out and join us. It's Costa Mesa, Costa Mesa Day at the fair. And then finally, I'll leave you with this. The Raiders are coming. They're going to be here starting on the twentieth, which is Saturday, but I think that they actually officially start their practices on the twenty-fourth. I'm not sure exactly because not necessarily open to the public, but go on their website because I just saw something on the internet that says, I think there might be some limited opportunities to attend those practices. So I think you may have to get reservations or something like that. But go on the Raiders' website, they're going to be here at Jack Hammat. And if you see a Raider, welcome them to the great city of Costa Mesa. That's all I have. City Manager Farrell Harrison, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and esteemed councilmembers and public. I just had a couple of updates. First, I wanted to share that we are abuzz with excitement about bringing B ordinance to you. And so based on some feedback that we received from our Chief of Police, our police department is liaison to the Animal Services Committee. We will have something to you know later than September, hopefully as early as August. So that's in the works. We'll need some noticing requirements, obviously, because it's an ordinance, but we do plan on bringing that forward for your approval in the near future. And then just the second item that I had is, yes, we will be working with the Raiders. There's very limited public participation due to some NFL requirements with the Raiders' Training Camp. And so we will be getting that information to council and moving forward from there. But we're looking forward to starting that partnership. And then last but not least, we will look into the issues that were raised regarding specific intersections and Placentia in particular and work with our, our city engineer, our traffic and transportation folks and our Public Works Director to make sure that, we're making sure that our intersections are as safe as possible. That's all I have.
Thank you. City Attorney Report, Ms. Hall Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing this evening.
All right. Okay. Now we'll move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar items are considered in one routine and, and will be decided in one motion. Councilmember Gamaros has to, unless they're pulled by the public or members of the public or the staff or, or the city council, Councilmember Gamaros has to recuse himself from item number three because of Priceless Pets, which is, which his wife works for. I have to recuse myself because of two recipients of the, of money that donated to my campaign, Everett, Dory, and Ware Disposal. So with that, unless anybody else has any recuse, other recusals, I'd entertain a motion at this time. Motion by Councilmember Reynolds.
Move the balance.
And, well, is it?
Oh, the whole thing.
Move the whole thing. Nothing's been pulled, right? You would have told me that?
That's right.
Okay. Nothing's been pulled. So we're moving the whole enchilada. Okay. And Councilmember Gamaros is seconding?
I didn't mean to. I didn't mean to. Yeah, don't disregard.
Councilmember Harper, second?
Yeah.
Okay. Good stuff. Reynolds is, is moving the entire consent calendar. Councilmember Harper is seconding. Let's call for the question.
Motion carries six zero.
All right. Way to go. Okay. And it's seven oh two, so we can do our public hearing item. So let's call that public hearing item number one.
Is that a happy?
Please, yeah. Okay. Please read the title.
Thank you. This is Enhanced Mobility for Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Grant Funding for OCTA. Presentation by Mr. Gruner, Parks and Community Services Director.
So Mr. Gruner, you have, or Director Gruner, you have the floor.
Thank you, Honorary Mayor. Councilmembers, members of the community. As you're aware, that we have a pretty robust senior transportation program or service here within the city of Costa Mesa. And through the continuous growth and popularity of the program itself, we're always looking for additional funding sources. And a grant opportunity has presented itself through the OCTA, the Orange County Transportation Authority, which we applied for. It does require a public hearing, which this council session would basically provide that opportunity for that, for that public hearing. And we do have a presentation that we wanted to just kind of go through and provide you with some of the details of the grant application. On May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, the Orange County Transportation Authority approved eight point five million dollars for the twenty twenty-four Enhanced Mobility for Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Program. On June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, staff submitted the grant application requesting two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in supplemental grant funding. On July twelfth, twenty twenty-four, staff resubmitted the grant application, increasing the request to two hundred and ninety-seven thousand to help offset some of the contingency requirements needed for the grant and the program itself. If approved, the grant funds will be available over an eighteen-month period beginning in January of twenty twenty-five. And as stipulated by the grant itself, the city has to hold a public hearing notifying local nonprofits that profit, that provide transportation in the area of this potential grant award to ensure that services are not duplicated and/or to coordinate the services. And just to give a little background on the program itself, the Senior Center Taxi Program, it was established in two thousand and eleven. It's a free door-to-door driving service to city residents aged sixty and older, Monday through Friday, from eight AM to four PM. It provides medical rides throughout most of Orange County and also non-medical rides within Costa Mesa only. Usage has grown over the last several, over the last three years, I apologize, considerably, considering that in twenty twenty-one, when we reinstated the program after the pandemic, we had two thousand eight hundred and ninety-one riders. That grew to three thousand five hundred and twenty-eight in twenty twenty-two. And in twenty twenty-three, it grew to six thousand seven hundred and sixty-three. And those are for just for the medical rides themselves. The non-medical rides were in twenty twenty-one, two thousand five hundred and eighteen, and that grew to three thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine. And is currently, or in twenty twenty-three, it's at six thousand and five. So each one has a considerable increase in ridership, which is great. That means that the program is working and people are aware of the program and certainly utilizing it as designed. The next slide shows the area map that the transportation is offered. And pretty much it's throughout Orange County for medical purposes and then again, just for non-medical transportation services just within Costa Mesa itself. So today's hearing satisfies the grant requirement of a public hearing and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Good presentation. Council, any questions? Councilmember Harper.
Just real quick, what do you estimate the number of people this will serve? If you're good to the full grant?
Yeah, I do have Kevin here. He's our senior supervisor overseeing this program and he has quite a bit of different knowledge, so I will be, you know, deferring to him from time to time.
Okay.
So there's just over a thousand individuals that are enrolled in the Senior Transportation Program currently. I think that's up by seventy or so from maybe about six months ago, so we've increased ridership. This year for calendar year twenty twenty-four, we're almost at our twenty twenty-three numbers. We're looking at ten to eleven thousand total rides so far.
And this, this, this grant adds more capacity? Is that what it does? Do I understand that right?
So we had a significant jump in ridership March of this year. And so we're reacting to that in order to provide continuity of services.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Gamaros?
I, real, real.
Oh, you, you have your red light. Okay. We're good?
No, I, I have something real quick.
Oh, sorry. Sure.
You know, I just want to say, this is not really a question, it's just an observation.
You know, I just want to say, this is not really a question. It's just an observation that I want to, I'm grateful that you're involved with this program, because every time we go to a city function or we do anything, and I see you out in the field, in the streets, at the park, you're always either running, or trotting, or sweating, or whatever it is, you're in there, you're doing it, you're not just standing around. So the city and the community is very lucky to have you be a part of this and overseeing it. So that's, I just want to make that public acknowledgement to you. Thank you.
That was a nice thing to say, and I agree. Councilmember Reynolds.
Thanks. I won't grill you with questions following that. I've already grilled stuff with a bunch of questions. And thank you for the responses to those. I just had one follow-up, because I'm really interested in the, there's a little bit of, going to be a little bit of overlapping services between this and the Circuit Program that we approved a month ago or so, right? And I know that you guys are going to be looking at some of the analysis to see where, you know, how we can coordinate that. We, when we approved the Circuit Program, part of the motion was to bring the Circuit Program Plan to the Active Transportation Committee. So I just want to confirm that the analysis you're looking at between sort of coverage for the Circuit Program and coverage for this program, will you be able to finish that before September?
So the specifics of that Circuit's program, I think is more for Public Works rather than our department. But the Senior Center does do a survey twice a year for this program, and we're holding off on the mid-year survey for it specifically, so we can get all of the details for the circulatory program into it, so we can heavily advertise it to the current Senior Taxi Program users, because that is one of the strategies we're relying on to offset the cost of this program.
Can you repeat that? I'm, just repeat that, the last part I didn't follow.
So we mail out surveys to all 1,000 participants of the program twice per year.
Okay.
So we are currently modifying that standard survey that we send out. We want to get all of the details of the circulator program into it to advertise to these participants that that is an additional option for them to use in addition to the Senior Taxi Program. That way, we can potentially offload some of the cost of the Senior Taxi Program on the circulator program. But the specifics of that is a better question for Public Works. We're not involved in that.
Okay. So when you say the circulatory program, you're talking about the grant-funded Circuit Program. Okay, just want to make sure. Okay. What I'm getting at is a, there is, as you responded to Councilmember Harper, there's, it sounds like growing demand for this service, point-to-point service, to get to medical appointments or other necessary appointments. And I suspect, just based on anecdotal information and, you know, historical trends, that it's, we're probably not meeting the full demand, right? Books still aren't aware of it. And then we know, you know, everyone in Orange County is aging. The demand's going to grow. So now we have the Circuit Program, which its services and coverage probably will, definitely will overlap with some of the coverage needs for this program. And that's what I want to understand, is how much, how much, for example, the Circuit Program can offset the, this program that's on our agenda today. So I heard you say that we're, we know that there's opportunity to offset, and so we're going to make sure we share information about it. I'm curious about sort of quantifying that number. So if Public Works is doing an analysis over here, and Parks and Community Services is doing an analysis over here, like, when does that come together?
So Councilmember Reynolds, we'll have all our reyes of our team coordinate with both departments to make sure that it's a comprehensive, cohesive analysis, and that we're maximizing the different funding sources in the best way possible, not, you know, having too much overlap and duplication. We really want to serve as many people as possible for as many trips as needed, you know, within the rules for each program. And so we'll be coordinating that at the City Manager's Office and working with both departments.
Got it. Okay. And then, so my original question was the timing of that. Do you expect that to be done by September, when the Bike Committee would be talking about it at their September meeting?
Councilmember Reynolds, I would have to follow up with our transportation team. I know that they intended on launching the program this summer, so I would need to see what their timelines are, and get both teams together and see how we can coordinate our efforts and not duplicate ridership, and see where we can offload some of the more miscellaneous rides, and motivate and offer up this alternative ridership program.
Okay. I'm interested.
So we'll get back to you.
Great, okay.
Details.
Yeah. I'm interested in digging in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers? Okay, so let's open it up to the public. Any members of the public want to speak on this item? No? Nobody in the chambers? What about on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Closed public comment. Okay, we'll entertain a motion on public hearing number one. Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes, I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
Excellent. Do you have anything to say about the motion?
I think this is a really great program. Thank you to staff for looking for additional funding sources to meet the growing need. I think this is a really critical, just like the Circuit Program that we approved a couple of months ago, this is a really critical piece to the overall transportation picture in Costa Mesa, meeting a need that we wouldn't be able to serve otherwise. So thank you for the work on this.
Okay, the only one thing I want to say publicly is, you know, I'm on the OCTA board now, and one of the beauties of being on that board is because I, that I can shamelessly advocate for Costa Mesa. It's not a violation of any of my obligations. It's not a conflict. So please, if there's any time you run into a roadblock, or you need some help, please contact me and let me do so, okay? Let's call for the question.
Mayor Protim Harland, Mayor Stevens.
I'm trying. I don't, yeah, something's wrong with it. It's not lit up for me. All right.
Okay. Councilmember Harper?
It's all right. Why don't we just do all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Okay, pass is six oh. All right, next up. Old business item. Please read the title, Madam Clark.
This is Adoption of Two Ordinances Entitled, Ordinance Number 2024-08, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Costa Mesa Amending Chapters Two (Bicycle Traffic) and Three (Bicycle Parking Racks Securing of Bicycles) of Title Four of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code Relating to Bicycle Traffic and Parking. The second ordinance is 2024-09, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Costa Mesa Amending Chapters One through Twenty-One, Inclusive of Title Ten of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code Relating to Definitions, Bicycles, and Rules of the Road. Presentation by Mr. Thomas, Active Transportation Coordinator and Captain Watkins.
Okay, gentlemen, you have the floor.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protim, and Council. This is the second reading of, as was mentioned, ordinances to amend Chapters Two and Three of Title Four, which is bicycles, and Chapters One through Twenty-One of Title Ten Motor Vehicle Traffic of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code. This revisions to the municipal code, these amendments to the municipal code are needed in order to bring the municipal code into compliance with the California Vehicle Code, as well as current bicycle riding practices and procedures within the community, especially as they pertain to the proliferation of electric bicycles. The first reading was approved by council on June 18 with a resolution to make minor changes. The Public Works Department and the Costa Mesa PD and the City Attorney's Office worked collaboratively to make those changes. And today, we are here to answer any additional questions and to move forward. And I'm joined by Captain Watkins from Costa Mesa PD.
All right, good stuff. Any questions, council? Okay, good stuff. All right. Open it up for public hearing. Anybody want to be heard on this item? Nope. How about on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Closed public comment. Okay. Who wants to make a motion? Councilmember Reynolds?
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Councilmember Chavez. Do you want to be heard on the motion?
Same comments as last time, but I will reiterate a huge thank you to staff, both from PD and Public Works, and all of the members of the committee who gave input on this. Really, really productive conversations that I think resulted in a strong ordinance. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. All right. Look forward to this passing and also for our public awareness and education program. Remember to add the fire department on that battery thing. Let's call for the question.
Motion carries six zero.
All right, great job. So now we're up to new business item number one. Madam Clark, would you please read the title?
Orange County Power Authority Feasibility Study. Presentation by Ms. Gallardo-Daly, Assistant City Manager.
Ms. Gallardo-Daly, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Cecilia Gallardo-Daly, Assistant City Manager. Staff is here to request that the council authorize the city manager and city attorney to issue a nondisclosure agreement to release City of Costa Mesa load data from Southern California Edison to the Orange County Power Authority conduct a feasibility study to determine whether joining OCPA is mutually beneficial. Joining me tonight in the presentation is representatives from the OCPA. Just a little bit of background. In 2002, AB 117 allowed local governments to form community choice energy programs. In 2020, the City of Irvine provided the funds to help start up the Orange County Power Authority Community Choice Energy Program. In 2020, the City of Costa Mesa considered joining the OCPA. And in 2022, OCPA began providing power to commercial customers in Huntington Beach, Buena Park, and Fullerton, and later began providing power to residential customers. To determine whether joining OCPA is mutually beneficial, they recommend authorizing a nondisclosure agreement between the City of Costa Mesa and the OCPA to release the city's load data from Southern California Edison to conduct a feasibility study. OCPA will facilitate obtaining that load data, which takes about 12 weeks. After the 12 weeks, OCPA will conduct an internal load data analysis and produce the feasibility study. This process takes approximately an additional six weeks. After that, OCPA will present its findings, and the city council can evaluate joining the Joint Powers Authority for the community's benefit. And now I'm going to turn it over to a representative from the Orange County Power Authority.
Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council, and also the city staff. Very happy to be here. My name is Joe Mosca, and I am the CEO of Orange County Power Authority. And here with me are several key members of the OCPA team, and we are happy to present and talk about OCPA anytime, especially in Costa Mesa. So the presentation I have here for you is a very brief presentation, so I'll talk to you a little bit about OCPA, and then end with questions, any questions that you have for us. The presentation is entitled Welcome to a New Way of Powering Your Community. It's a new way in Costa Mesa, but it's not new necessarily in Orange County. As you saw from your staff's presentation, several other cities have already been members of our CCA. And also, there are 25 CCAs throughout the state of California. So the state of California passed legislation over 20 years ago enabling CCAs in the state of California, community choice aggregators. And they borrowed that from other states. So CCAs have been in the United States for well over two decades now. In the state of California, we've had great success with CCAs in the 20 years that we've been in existence. Those 25 CCAs, Orange County Power Authority being one of the newest kids on the block, they now power many homes in the state of California. So 14 million Californians are benefiting from a CCA, 200 communities throughout the state of California. So we're not new. We are new to Costa Mesa, but we are quite literally powering the clean energy future. Some of the benefits of community choice energy are right up there on your screen. Choice for the first time ever. It's not just the utility, but you also have Orange County Power Authority, and I'm going to go over some of the choices that you can make with OCPA. Competition in the energy market. Competition is good, and it drives more choices for the consumer, for our customers. Competitive energy costs. Affordability is extremely important to OCPA. We're not for profit. We're not for the shareholders. We're for our customers. So we're not for profit. That benefits our customers. So we're investing all of our revenue back into our communities. And so affordability is high on our list. It's central to the core mission of OCPA. Local control. Our Board of Directors is made up of community, local community leaders, such as yourself. So if Costa Mesa became a member of our JPA, you would send one of your city council members to our Board of Directors. So it's locally controlled by our community leaders. Programs and power are all things that are decided by a Board of Directors, and rates are decided locally, not up in San Francisco, but locally in our local communities. Local economic development, we're all about local generation, which is creating economic development, job creation, and also training. We need to train the workforce of tomorrow, today. Local reinvestment and designing programs that fit the need for our local communities. So designing programs that are fitting for Costa Mesa. What are the goals of Costa Mesa, and how can we help you with your sustainability goals by designing programs that would be implemented to help you with those goals that you have? Putting more renewable energy on the grid. It's not just about putting more renewable energy onto the grid, but that's critically important. But we also want to help you with all of your other sustainability goals, be it your transportation goals, which we heard today. We have programs that can help with multimodal systems, shifting modes, reducing vehicle miles traveled, help you with reducing carbon footprint related to your trash, to your building sector. We want to help you with all of your sustainability goals. Here are some of the choices you have as an Orange County Power Authority customer. Basic choice is 44% renewable energy, and that costs you less, 3% less as the equivalent generation rate than SCE. It has more renewable energy, less carbon emissions than SCE, and it costs you less. Smart choice is 1 cent per kilowatt hour more. It has 72% renewable energy and significantly less carbon emissions than SCE does. 100% renewable energy, no carbon emissions, and it's 1 and 1/2 cent more per kilowatt hour. Next slide, please. And here's just an average residential customer in our territory, and this is what their bill would look like. Again, on the basic choice, as the equivalent generation rate, we're 3% less on that generation charge. And then you have the total bill impact, and then the smart choice, and the 100%. Next slide, please. Here are some ways that we communicate with our customers and our communities, and some public outreach that we do. And here's a lot of items that we do. But we also are broadly reaching out through marketing communications to let people know who OCPA is and the benefits of clean energy and raising awareness of OCPA. We're also working specifically with our communities to make sure that we have a communications plan and an outreach plan that is tailored to your community, to ensure that we're reaching out in a way that you think that's best suited for your community as well. So in each of our cities, Irvine, Fullerton, and Buena Park, we have plans that are specifically tailored to those communities with their input as well. Next slide. Told you it was a brief slide deck presentation. So I'm available for any questions that you have about this next step. And it's really a very initial step, where you're exploring this membership possibility.
Thank you. Councilmember Chavez?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, and thank you for your presentation, Mr. Mosca.
Mosca.
Mosca. I have four questions, one for staff, one for yourself, but I'll start with staff first. So for staff, can you just elaborate in more simple terms to the public what exactly we're voting on today?
Today is a nondisclosure agreement that would authorize the release of Southern California Edison load data to the OCPA for analysis.
Okay, so today's not a vote to join OCPA, just a vote to get data so that they can analyze it to see if, analyze it for our city's behalf?
That's correct.
Okay. Now I have three questions for you. First of all, thank you for joining us today.
You're welcome.
I want to really look at page seven on the slide deck, which is the one that had the three choices. My first question is, how does a resident or a business owner who's an OCPA, how do they choose these options? Do they get a choice when they first join the organization? The city set one? Does the org set one? How does this work?
Right, so good question. So under state law, you would basically, as we move on So under state law, you would basically, as we move on with the process, if the city of Costa Mesa wanted to move on with that process, one of the questions that you would have at the end of the process is what would be your default setting for your city? So when we launch your city, in other words, where do you want, where do you believe customers ought to be? Where do you think your, your, your municipal accounts should be? Where do you think your residential accounts should be? Where do you think your commercial accounts should be? Irvine is at 100%, Fullerton is at 69%, Buena Park is at 100% for all customer accounts. So you can decide where you want that default setting to be. Once you're launched, customers have their own choice in terms of where they want. So say, for instance, Costa Mesa said, I think that it's prudent for us to launch at basic choice. I think the commercial, the municipal accounts should be at 100%, but the, the residential customers and the commercial customers ought to be at basic choice. You can make that decision, and then once we launch, residential and commercial customers can decide on their own whether or not they want basic choice, to stay with basic choice, to go with smart choice, or go with 100%. We make it as easy as possible. Our website is as open and transparent as you can get. We also do multiple mail pieces to individual customers, pre-launch and after-launch. And we can actually go above and beyond that in terms of our, that tailoring of that communication and outreach plan.
Thank you. And then just following on that first question, is it the representative to the OCPA board for the council to decide, or the city council as a whole to decide the initial rate for residents and business owners?
In terms of these energy offerings, that would be a decision for you.
On the city council?
For your city council.
Okay, thank you. Second question, because, and I'll just be upfront, the one that appeals to me the most out of all these is the basic choice, because it's cheaper than SCE. And I'm, I'm looking at people struggling to pay rent and things, I think anything we do for residents to save money is prudent, and we should be looking into. How is it that you guys are able to be more competitive than SCE?
Good question. We're so, we're, we're much leaner than SCE, and, and all of our revenue is, we're not for profit, and all of our revenue is for the benefit of our customers, and so we're reinvesting in our, our communities. And so this is a choice that we've made. We've made a choice to basically be 3% less. So we have a rate design that we set each year. The rate design for, for 2024 is what I was mentioning, so it's 3% less on the equivalent generation rate for the basic choice, and it's one cent more for the smart choice, and one and a half cents. So that's a, it's a rate design that our Board of Directors decided, this is the, the best choice for our, our customers. And so it, it's a, it's a decision made by the Board of Directors. Less than 5% of my, my budget is fixed cost, and so we are an incredibly lean organization, and reinvesting all of our revenue back into our communities.
Thank you. And my last question is more hypothetical, but I still want to ask it for curiosity's sake. So you mentioned that this is kind of a decision by, by the Board of Directors, so OCPA. So theoretically speaking, it is possible to go for a 4% savings, or 3% savings, or get more savings, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and, and so around, within our financial planning, we basically, so right now, we, that rate design means that we're indexed off the, the IOU, off of the Southern California Edison. And, and so we have about $100 million in reserves, two years in existence. So obviously, we're making more money than we are in terms of, of, of putting it, plowing it all back into rate discounts. So in the future, too, within our finance planning, once we get to around 27, 2027, we would apply for an S and P credit rating. That credit rating would allow us to drive down the largest item, line item in our budget, which is the, the cost of power. At that time, we'll move to a cost of service rate setting, which means that what are our costs, and that would basically dictate how our rates are. In that model, you will see other CCAs, especially some of the more mature CCAs up north, that have even greater discounts on, on their rates. And so generally speaking, there are no CCAs that don't give discounts, and some give even greater discounts as they mature.
Thank you for your time. I need your, your questions.
You're welcome. And just, just again, so the, the analysis, the, the load data is confidential load data, that's why you have to enter into that non-disclosure agreement with SCE, and then we enter into that agreement as well. And then that makes up, we'll, we'll do an analysis of that load data to understand the financial impact of bringing Costa Mesa into our JPA. And that makes up the, 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 a very big part of our feasibility analysis, and that's the, the, what you have to do to kind of explore whether or not membership makes sense.
Councilmember Gamaros, then Councilmember Harper.
Yes, thank you. So I have a few questions for you here. In the background here, one of the things that I'm reading under your model is that you guys have renewable generation sources. How, how do you implement those for the city of Costa Mesa?
So every year, we have a power content label that is released, and that we disclose all of the, all of the energy that we purchased on an annual basis for all of our customers, and how that proves what we've purchased on behalf of our customers. Just like Southern California Edison, we have an entire team, myself included, that is purchasing energy on the market, on a daily basis, on, on a monthly basis. So we're buying short-term, long-term energy to meet the demand of our customers. And so that generation could be anywhere throughout the state of California, could be anywhere within the, the, the Western grid.
Okay, perfect. Western grid. So do you have any responsibility to maintain the grid?
OCPA is a load-serving entity, doesn't have a responsibility to main, to, to, to maintain the grid. That responsibility for the, for the grid that we're in right now is a California independent system operator. So my responsibility as a load-serving entity is to basically deliver the load that is, 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 is demand, the demand that, that, from my customers to, to the grid.
Okay. So is, is the Orange County Power Authority a nonprofit organization?
It's a not-for-profit.
It's a not-for-profit. So you're a 501(c)(3), c)(4)? What, what are you?
So nonprofits and not-for-profits are different. A nonprofit is where you can't make a profit. A not-for-profit is where we can make a profit, but our profit is for the benefit of our customers.
Hence the 100 million in reserves.
The 100 million in reserves is, is when you're basically purchasing $270 million in, in energy on an annual basis. You need those reserves to ensure stability, rate stability, and ensure that you have the, the liquidity for the, the energy suppliers and developers that you're entering into. And that's because we also don't have a credit rating. And so once we get a credit rating, you still need about 40% of your, your, your revenue in reserves, but we would then basically move to a less aggressive stance in terms of putting money into reserves.
Okay, so let me ask you about incentives then, and let me just, I'll use myself as an example. In our family, we have an electric vehicle, we charge it daily. What kind of incentives are going to be offered comparatively to Edison, what Edison has, or whoever we use now? Like in comparison, what, what benefit would I get as a user who's, you know, I'm using quite a bit of electricity since I'm charging a vehicle daily? What is, what are the incentives?
So I would say that, that essentially, OCPA, like other CCAs, are community-based organizations that are all about helping you with the, your sustainability goals. And if that is incentivizing EV charging, we're about that. That is something that, that we want to help out with. Currently, with, for your situation, right, if you want to be at basic choice, then that, you'll get 44%, and it'll be 3% less than the equivalent generation rate. So if, if the EV rate that you're on is, you know, X amount of dollars, you would get for bait, for, with OCPA, you would get 3% less. We can also, we, I cut some slides out here to make sure this presentation's as short as possible, but I also introduced in our, some of our slides, all of the programs that we've basically started in our first year and a half, two years of service. Generally speaking, CCAs, not until they have the internal capacity, and also the, the revenue, do we start to see some programs coming on. You guys would be coming in, in right when we're at that sweet spot where we can start to launch programs. Although OCPA, from its very start, started, started dedicating a million dollars a year to programs, so we do have programs now. But one of the things that were ready to launch is our Community Power Plan. Community Power Plan is our master plan for the next five years or so. And that, that, in that process, we would be asking all of our customers, all of our cities, all of our member agencies, and, and all of our, our stakeholders, what are the types of programs that would be most helpful to you, that we want to launch in the next five years? And then we would put a plan together of how we're going to basically pay for that, how we're going to staff up, and how we're going to launch, design those programs, and launch those programs. So if you were on the board of OCPA, and incentivizing, further incentivizing EV charging was something that was important to you, that was, that would be something that we would look at. Right now, beyond the, the fact that, that the, the options, which is one of is, is 3% less, which is an incentive, we don't have any other incentives for that. We also have, we're active trying to get money from the state and the federal government on everything from energy efficiency to decarbonization, to EV chargers, and EV charging. As you may know, there, you know, we're far be, behind on our goal of deployment of EV charging in, in Orange County and throughout the state of California. So there's a lot of dollars flowing for these devices and incentives for home charging, so we would love to be able to bring more of that to our customers.
So I just want to close and say that this is an extremely critical point in our community, that we, if we make a decision like this, it, it has a huge impact. And when, when we go and we, you know, we do this, and we, we authorize an NDA for the purpose of conducting your feasibility study, I personally am going to be extremely critical, and I would love to see some analysis that shows direct benefit. What you have here, and I'm just going to say on slide seven, 44% renewable, this is kind of like, you know, how do we interpret that? Costs less than 3% of SCE's generation rate? How do we know what that is? It's kind of like an unknown. When this comes together, if we do approve this, I really want to see hard numbers that could point to very specific line items that show per household in a community, how much money you are actually saving, and where this is coming from, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. We couldn't fit the tariff book of SCE in a U-Haul. So, so, so essentially, what I'm saying is it's 3% less than the equivalent generation rate, but we can go more deeper, and we can basically run different models of different residential or commercial customers so that you can see that.
I'm not asking for a U-Haul, but maybe more than nine pages.
All right.
Thank you. That's all I have.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Harper.
I think like Councilmember Gamaros, I'm trying to understand the concept here, and SoCal Edison is a public utility. Now, are they considered a not-for-profit?
They're a for-profit.
They're for-profit.
Yes, owned by an international corporation that is for-profit.
Okay. So, so you layer on top this agency that says they can buy from wherever, and you hope to create competition with SCE, correct? Is that what you do? Is that what?
So I wouldn't, I would, I would just take objection with the word "layer."
Oh, sorry.
Because it sounds like it's more bureaucratic.
Yeah, it does sound.
And I would say that we're not layering on anything, and we are.
Where does your, where does your funding come from then, Joe?
Rate base. It's all rate customers. So everything, except with, with one exception of, of acting as the conduit for more state or federal funding, as much as we can get in terms of grant funding to, to help you and help our cities with their sustainability goals, that's, that's the one exception. All of the funding would be, would be rate dollars.
Okay, so this agency formed by money contributed by Irvine, I think the city of Irvine made a contribution to start this, and there's some state dollars to start?
There are no, there, I'm sorry. I'm sorry for confusing. There are no state dollars that started OCPA. Irvine was, did originally seed, give money for the, for the start of OCPA. But there are no state monies that.
Forgive me, okay.
But I was only saying that, that, except for some state grants that, that we could basically try to bring to our, our, our customers to help with some sustainability goals. But there's no, the only, only dollars that, that fund OCPA are rate dollars.
Okay, so the community choice energy programs came from where, Joe? Not from the state, it was a?
So there's state legislation that enables
Okay.
...local communities to come up with a local solution in terms of choice. So if, if our customers want more than, than what, more renewable energy than what the local utility offers, and they want local decision-making in terms of how their, how their dollars are spent in programs that are developed, SCE covers millions of customers. It is very difficult for them to tailor to individual communities. Representing three cities, we're, we have a unique ability to basically tailor our programs to our, our, our customers. So we're not only putting more renewable energy onto the grid, but we're basically reinvesting all of our revenue back into our communities to help you with the goals that you have around sustainability.
Does SoCal Edison buy renewable energy?
They do buy renewable energy.
They do. And so there's, here's where the concept I'm in trouble with, is there's, there's a pile of energy here, some of it's renewable, some of it's not. And either you buy it and give it to us, or SoCal Edison buys it and gives it to us. I don't see anywhere where the, no offense, the agency you've created creates more renewable energy. It might create more demand, which will increase the price, which will eventually come back to us, but in the totality of the energy commodity, it doesn't change anything.
It's not, it's not, it's, it's certainly increasing demand, but it's not increasing the price, because the market responds to the demand, and then there's more clean energy on the market, so it's driving down the cost.
There's more, there's more, there's more demand for it, which generally drives prices up based on.
If the market doesn't respond with.
If the market doesn't respond, and if the market does respond, it creates more, then the price adjusts based on the demand, right?
Right.
So generally, if you have more demand than there is supply, prices will increase. I'm just, my point was, and you can correct me if it's wrong, there's a, there's so much of a commodity that's renewable and non-renewable energy, and SoCal Edison and your agency takes from that, focuses it in a certain area, but in the totality, your agency doesn't really create more renewable energy. Might create more demand, but doesn't create more.
No, we create more renewable energy, and we create demand as well.
How is it you create more renewable energy?
Because by creating more demand, you're giving, sending signals to the market that there's a need for more clean energy, which is why the state of California basically allowed this type of solution. If you want more renewable energy than the utility is delivering, because the delivery, the utility is only delivering bare minimum of what is required. But if you want to, if you want to do more, then you could basically go with the CCA. The CCAs are also helping the state to get to those 2045 carbon-free goals.
This all seems circular, so the, the state spends money to encourage renewable, and then it creates an agency to drive renewable to specific cities, which creates more demand, which, I see what it's doing, it seems like a, a mousetrap. This is going to cost the consumer.
The state doesn't create us or pay for us.
I know they don't, but, but they provided the incentive and the direction and the, and the model.
It's all market-based.
Well, if it's all market-based, then.
It is all market-based, and essentially, as you're having higher demand,
Yeah.
...the CCAs, the 25 CCAs throughout the state of California are quite literally contracting for and, 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 and bringing to, to the market more clean energy than have ever existed before. So when you look at the vast majority of the contracts that are entered into for clean energy, it is, they are the CCAs that are powering the future and enabling us to reach those 2045 goals.
So theoretically, we would, we would not have to contract to buy any energy from SC, SoCal Edison? That's what you're saying? You're going to buy it on the open market, your energy, and flow it through the?
You don't have the choice. Without OCPA, you have, your customers have one choice.
With OCPA?
With OCPA, you have, you have, you can stay with the bundled
Right.
...customers of SCE, and get your 33% with lots of carbon emissions, or you can come to OCPA and have 44% less carbon emissions, 72% less carbon emissions, or 100% no carbon emissions.
But if you, if you, I mean, here's my point, you buy more renewable energy in the market, there's less available, or it's more costly, it, it all balances out, it just shifts it from one place in the state to another. That's what my argument is. Unless you're saying that I can, with OCPA, I can pressure SoCal Edison to be smarter and buy better and charge us less. That's the only, that's the one argument I, I could, I could buy into. And, and I sound argumentative, I'm more trying to understand how the whole thing works, and I apologize if I sound argumentative.
No, you don't, I, I don't take it, I, I think you're, you're grappling with the issue. No, that, that, the, the demand that's being created is basically causing the market to respond with more clean energy, more innovation, more demand response, more reduction of, 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 of energy, more fixing up of the transmission system, the distribution system, all things that need to happen in the state of California if we're going to hit our 2024, 2045 goals.
And if it was market-based, I wouldn't need a lot of regulation around it, would, is always my argument, but, and I don't want to go there. The other question, a question I had is, you had some cities join and then exit. Do you want to speak to that? Which cities were those, and what were the reasons for exiting this? Which cities were those and what were the reasons for exiting this program?
So the city of Huntington Beach exited. They decided that, that they wanted to put it on pause and they decided to exit.
Do you have a reason why they gave? What was their issue?
There, there, it, there seemed to be a, a change in political leadership and they wanted to go in a different direction.
Okay. Lake Forest?
Lake Forest was never part of the JPA.
Okay. Then that, what I'm reading is inaccurate then?
I'm not sure what you're reading.
Yeah. It was from, it was from a, gosh, there's a link to it, I need to follow the link.
Lake Forest was never part of the JPA.
Lake Forest never part of it. City of Orange? Were they ever part of?
City of Orange was never part of the, the JPA.
So, gosh, I'm reading that. I'll, I'll.
We, 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 we think the world of, of Orange and we would love to have the city of Orange in our G.
And you have how many cities right now?
Three. Buena Park, Huntington Beach, I'm sorry, Buena Park, Fullerton, and the city of Irvine.
City of Irvine. The only other comment I have is, is your, your 3% less than SCE's rates is based on February rates. And of course, it all depends, doesn't it? Any year that could change because you don't buy as well, or they lower their rates, or you have to increase your rates. It's, it's not, it's a moving target, right?
So, so what I was saying before is that we have a rate design that we set on an annual basis and that rate design is set by the Board of Directors and it says that we will be 3% less on the equivalent generation rate on the basic choice and will be one cent more on the, on the smart choice and one and a half cent more on the, on the, on the 100%. And yes, SCE changes rates about five or six times a year on the, on the delivery side and on the generation side. When they change their rates on the, on the, on the generation side, because we're indexed off of them, we move with them. And so at all times, I will always be 3% less on the basic choice as to the equivalent generation rate and then one cent more kilowatt and one and a half cent.
But you're dependent, your rates are, I mean, this sounds like a business model and you have to buy at a certain level and if you don't buy at that level, don't you end up tapping into your reserves? And the rates have to go up to catch up and refill those reserves? You have to buy power, right? You're, you're, you're in the power business.
We're purchasing power.
Yeah.
And the, the reserves are for, just like you would have reserves in other, you know, situations of public entities, the reserves could be used by our Board of Directors in the future for smoothing out rate impacts or rate increases. Yes, that's what those are, reserves are for. Primarily in our financial planning, we are, those reserves are for, for ensuring that there's collateral for a lot of the contracts that we enter into and also for moving toward an S and P credit rating, which, which requires anywhere between 30 to 50% in reserves and also three years of, of service.
I think it has to be said that the critical part of running what you run has to be a really great discipline in how you buy and the ratability with which you buy.
Yes.
Otherwise, you get yourself in a lot of trouble.
Yes.
I mean, if you put me in charge, you'd probably bankrupt, right? I mean, you could, don't, don't hire me to do, not to buy, maybe petroleum, but not electricity, so I could do that. That's all. I thank you for, thanks for everybody's patience.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Okay. Thank you for the primer on CCAs. I just want to focus on the very narrow issue before us, which is this feasibility study.
Sure.
And I recognize we're really at the preliminary stage here. You mentioned you have three participating agencies. Did you perform a feasibility analysis for each of those?
So I joined OCPA about, about a year and a half, two years ago. All those members are founding members and so the analysis, the feasibility analysis would have been done originally by Irvine, who did the feasibility analysis for all the founding members.
Okay. So have, have other feasibility analyses been done for individual cities?
We are currently just about wrapping it up with Fountain Valley. Fountain Valley voted around March to, to move to the next step with Orange County Power Authority and Exploring Membership. And, and we did that, that, that would be our first feasibility study that we've done since the founding of OCPA. And that study will be wrapped up very shortly by our finance and data analytics team and presented to the OCPA Board on July 30th.
Okay. You started to answer a question offered by Councilmember Chavez about, I think, what was, what's in the feasibility study. So can you expand on what those criteria might be?
Sure. It's, it's essentially looking at the financial impact of, of, in this, in this instance, Costa Mesa joining OCPA. So what is that financial impact? Is it, you know, when we look at the, the, the level of energy that, the load that would be added to OCPA, and this again, this is visa, this is required under our internal policies, under our JPA, and also under state regulations that we would have to file with our implementation plan if we were to amend to include Costa Mesa. It would look at the financial impacts of, of joining, of Costa Mesa joining OCPA. What is the energy load? What is the shape of that load? What are the, the customers within, within Costa Mesa? When do you want to, when, when would you basically incorporate them into the JPA? Where would they be in terms of, of, of energy, responding to one of the other council members' questions in terms of the, the cost of renewable energy? Where would they be? Would they be at basic choice? Would they be at smart choice? Would they be at 100%? And when would you actually launch them? All of those would have a financial impact on OCPA. What is that impact? Is it positive or negative? And that's something that we would study. And it would be a very prudent, robust study for our, our, our board and also to be shared with this city council.
Okay. So what would be the hypothetically, what would be conditions where you would make a finding that it wasn't feasible? What, what has to happen?
That's a good question because we haven't had, we haven't broached that yet with the Board of Directors. And so I would argue that even if it was slightly negative financially, that it is because we're not-for-profit and because we are a, a mission-driven organization about sustainability, about clean energy, about local generation, local jobs, that it would be in our interest to basically take a city like Costa Mesa, even if it was negative financially, because in, in the, in the, in the initial stages, it may be negative, but over, over, over time, it would get positive. And the environmental reach, the benefits of the, of the environmental benefits would far outweigh any kind of negative financial implications early on. But, but that's not something that, that's not a discussion that we've had with the, the Board of Directors so far and we would try our hardest to work to, to ensure that it's a positive. So potentially talk to you about the different energy offerings, moving when we would launch you to ensure that that's a positive. But in the long run, it would be a positive because it would enlarge the economy to scale. The larger that, that I'm purchasing for, the more I'm driving down my largest line item.
So, so the objective of the feasibility study is, is to gauge the impact on OCPA as an organization. Obviously, there's some other considerations there. Is there any financial impact analysis for the city?
There is no financial impact on the, on the city of Costa Mesa. You would be joining a joint powers authority, which shields your general fund from any liability. Plus, we have, we have ample reserves in the bank, so there would be no, and we're in the money on all of our energy contracts, so there would be no liability, but the JPA also does limit your liability.
Okay. So at the end of the day, the feasibility study is basically for you to use the data to make a determination if, if it makes sense for the agency.
Right.
And there's.
That would be the first step.
And there's largely an incentive to find that it does make sense for the agency.
It would be a very prudent analysis and a very responsible conservative analysis. You know, OCPA with three members is doing quite well right now. And so no member is going to want to put an unreasonable burden on their, on their ratepayers. And so it's something that would be very conservative, very accurate and robust.
So this is my last question. Does the OCPA Board then review the report that's prepared, the feasibility study and as a board make their own determination about whether or not it makes sense before it comes back to us?
The Board would review that analysis, review the recommendation and then give direction as to whether or not they want to formally invite you to join.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
So I just have a few questions. So I, I swear I've been listening to everything you've been saying, but I've also been looking at this particular website called energy.gov. I, I'm not even sure what.
That's the Department of Energy, I believe.
Is that the Department of Energy?
US Department of Energy.
Okay. So it says renewable energy generates over 20% of all US electricity. That percentage continues to grow. Is that so far so good? This is a reliable source?
That's so, that, that's talking nationwide, yes.
Nationwide, right. And I knew so little about renewable energy. I really didn't even know what it meant until I sat here, but it's got five different categories: wind, hydropower, solar, biomass, and geothermal. So are, are those the, the renewable energies that the, that the JPA purchases?
So we hope to continue to diversify our portfolio and I would hope that many of those sources are, are in even larger quantities in the future. Currently, because of where we're located in Southern California, solar is, solar and energy storage is, is, is the, the least expensive and the most popular, but, but certainly geothermal is something that I would love to incorporate more into our portfolio. It does have a little bit of, of carbon emissions, so it is, under the state of California, it is a qualified, bona fide renewable energy source, but it does have carbon emissions. You'll notice the 100% has zero carbon emissions. And so if I, this has been a debate with some folks. If I put that geothermal into that 100%, you're going to see that, that carbon emissions go up. But it does, I think it actually is a prudent resource because it, you know, when the wind's not blowing, the sun's not shining, you still have, you still have renewable energy coming out to the grid.
So when you talk about, you know, the, the JPA buying renewable energy, are they prim, are you guys primarily buying solar?
Solar, wind, geothermal, biomass, hydro, yes.
So all of these?
Yes.
And, and.
But solar and, solar is going to be, solar and wind are going to be the, the largest sources.
Okay.
And, and battery storage.
Right. And batter, and storage, okay. Got it. And then, so if 20% of renewable energy generates, 20% of all US electricity, 80% is generated by like, is it fossil fuels? Is it power plants that are run on fossil fuels?
So if it's not renewable energy in the state of California, it's mostly natural gas. That's the backbone of the California grid. It could be coal US-wide. I mean, you could be getting coal from the southeast. It could be, it could be natural gas. It could be nuclear, could be other things that, 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 that the US has in its portfolio. I know fusion is becoming large in the, the US nationwide, so there could be other resources that make up that other 80%.
And those are considered non-renewable because once they're burned off, it's gone? And you have to pull more out of the?
Right.
Out of, out of, out of the earth or whatever you get it? Okay. And?
And as, as always, California is, is ahead of the country in terms of, of its consumption of renewable energy. And, and, and so at any one point in time, we have much more on the grid than 20%. In fact, there's a nifty app from CalISO that you can go onto and you can tell on a real-time basis how much renewable energy is on the grid.
And you, I, I thought I heard you say that SCE, if you buy from SCE, you're getting about 33% renewable.
Sir, their energy product, the only energy product they have is available, is basically tracks with the renewable energy portfolio standards by the state of California. So their last power content label said they were around 30, 33%.
Okay.
They may be a bit higher now, but their, their, their next power content label, just like us as a load-serving entity, is, is going to come out around September.
Okay. And we have this thing, I don't know if you're aware of this, if you've seen it on our website or whatever, but I'm going to give you a gift. It's a little mouse pad.
Oh, awesome.
I don't know if people can see it. See it on there? And, and it has, it has, the city of Costa Mesa has six core values. One of them is integrity, the other is innovation, inclusion, collaboration, compassion. That's one of my favorites. And then the sixth one is sustainability, right? So it sounds to me like what we're talking about here falls pretty squarely within the core value of sustainability. Would you agree?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. That's the right answer and for which you win. A mouse pad. Please, Madam Clerk, can he get his mouse pad? There you go. Sorry. All right. If you get nothing else today, you get a mouse pad. Thank you very much. If, are there other questions? Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, thanks. I had just had some follow-up questions to the items here. I'm, I think, I feel like councilmembers know, I, I work in the energy space. I know a lot of folks who work at CCAs. I have a lot of friends who are members of CCAs and I'm frequently jealous of the benefits that they have through that CCA membership. I wanted to confirm my understanding of some of the core benefits or what I think of as the core benefits and then also my understanding of, of some of the information from the feasibility study. So you described, you know, basically right now, if you live in Costa Mesa, you purchase your energy through SoCal Edison, you have your energy delivered through SoCal Edison, you've got no other choice, I guess, unless you go off-grid.
Some of your big commercial customers could have our customers.
Let's talk about residential customers.
All right.
Resident, we'll keep it simple. Residential customers, right? So, you know, the, the membership with OCPA, a residential customer could continue to purchase their energy through Edison. They will continue to get their energy delivered through Edison, but they have the choice also to purchase their energy through OCPA.
Right.
You will always have your energy delivered through Edison because we're not trying to build another grid.
We're not, we're not a utility. So they own the poles and wires and they'll still deliver it. We'll, we'll basically with our suppliers and, and developers, deliver that load to the CalISO grid and then SCE delivers the energy to the homes and businesses.
Right. And so.
I'm not climbing the poles.
The current, right, right, right. The current situation, because SCE is our only choice, they are an investor-owned utility, not a public utility. I'm also jealous a lot of the public utilities. They, they're essentially in a monopoly, so their rate design happens through the CPUC because it's a heavily regulated monopoly, right? Bringing OCPA into the picture, allowing us to purchase energy through OCPA brings that decision-making locally. So instead of rate design happening at the CPUC up in, they're in San Francisco, right? It happens wherever the Board meets at OCPA, among members of the Board.
Correct.
Okay. So local rate design. And then you talked about profit, so it's a not-for-profit. There is profit, but that profit is required to go back into the community. So I see that as a.
Benefiting our customers.
A huge, right. And then it's the Board and the members that decide how that profit gets used. And then we, I think, I do think that this is a key benefit still, because we still get energy delivered through SCE, we're still SCE customers. So Councilmember Gamaros, when you asked about incentives that SCE might provide, like residents would still have access to those incentives, but there might be additional incentives available through OCPA.
Exactly. And a good, a good example of that, which I get often asked about, are the low-income programs.
Right.
Those are, those are state programs, state dollars administered by SCE. So if you're an OCPA customer, you still have access to all of those low-income programs.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great. And that's, that's one of the areas where I mentioned being jealous of some folks I know who do live in, in areas with CCAs, more established CCAs in Northern California, for example, where they've got, you know, very mature programs with, with very healthy incentives, you know, where I've been able to get a certain, you know, state-level incentive through SCE, they can get that incentive and then additional, you know, funds to support an energy efficiency project, for example. So they're benefiting. Okay. Okay. So, so I see those as, as, you know, in addition to the sustainability stuff, which I believe in, those are just sort of core financial and local control benefits that, that come with a CCA membership. On the feasibility analysis, it totally makes sense that the, you know, the board wants to make sure that Costa Mesa would be a good customer. You know, I could posit on some scenarios where it might not make sense. I imagine a customer with extremely intermittent load, or like a very irregular load profile, might be too much of a problem to handle, right? So you want to make sure that that's the case. We're here interested in, you know, understanding what the total energy cost impacts might be for our customers, you know, looking at residential customers, small business customers, and so on. So will we be able to get that information from the feasibility analysis?
So, great question. So, so the feasibility analysis is basically looking at the financial impacts in OCPA, although that analysis is also good for you all to take a look at, and you will get that. But with that customer data, which we don't currently have, but in the future, when we get the nondisclosure agreement, we pull that customer data, our data analytics team in-house can do that analysis. And so we can come back and talk about, or you can let us know what type of modeling that you'd like to do, but we could basically look at that customer data and, and tell you just about anything you want to know about the impacts on your, on your customers.
Right. So with the, the three different rate options you have, for example, you could tell us, you know, on average, this would reduce a residential customer's bill X dollars a year, right?
Absolutely.
Based on real data in 2023 or 2024?
Right.
I don't know what data you're getting. Okay, great. And then similarly, you know, we talked about one of the benefits being the profit that comes back to the community, you would be able to make estimates on what that profit would be, right? So what's this sort of additional profit that gets to be reinvested in our community that would come from this analysis?
Absolutely. And, and your city would be, currently, we're, we're, the, the board is budgeting about $1 million a year for customer programs, but in a very short period of time, especially if Costa Mesa moved forward and was a member, we would be switching over to more of a, a rate design that's set based on cost of service. And at that time, it would be incumbent upon the, the, the staff to basically talk about different programs that we think are effective, and our, our communities want, and convince the board to basically implement some of these programs. So it would be up to the board to kind of decide to fund various programs, affordability programs, energy efficiency programs, but the dollars would then flow to the, the communities with all of the savings that we have.
Got it. Okay. Oh, and you actually did touch on one other core benefit that I had, I had forgotten about, which is, you know, in addition to sort of that profit reinvested, the JPA is in a position to pursue additional state funds or grants, or some of the federal funds, right, that are available for energy efficiency or other?
Yeah, absolutely.
Similar goals, right? So it's another, it's an opportunity where our city might alone pursue some of those grants. Here, we would be part of a collective that can, is maybe better positioned to pursue and, and sort of deploy some of those additional funds.
Sure, absolutely. We do absolutely see ourselves as augmenting your team. We don't want to put a burden on your team, we don't want your staff working for OCPA, we want to work for you and augment your capacity and augment your capabilities. And one of the areas could be grants. And it's not just OCPA, because in the case of some of our grants, we could be partnering with Los Angeles County, larger agencies that have a really good chance at getting Department of Energy grants, and then bringing some, home some money to our, our cities.
Great, thank you.
All right, good stuff. Let's open it up to the public. All right, you have the floor, Mr. Taboda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I didn't, I didn't read the staff report on this, so I'm coming in cold, I guess, but I'm all for renewable energy, I'm all for lower utility rates. I recognize that the U-Haul analogy probably applies when you're talking about race structure for utilities. But I also know OCPA has a checkered past, and maybe that's in the past, and no offense to current staff members from OCPA here, that's something to consider. I think also Huntington Beach was mentioned that they opted out recently, and it sounds like that was a political decision versus a business decision. If I'm not mistaken, I think the County of Orange recently opted out also. Be interesting to know why they opted out of, of that agreement. Also, I was intrigued by the questions from the council members, and I appreciate all your, all your questions. I was intrigued by the, the answers to Mayor Protem's questions, in particular, that OCPA is, is doing this analysis to see if they want to accept, it sounds like to me, Costa Mesa into their agreement or their, or their agency. But then to Councilwoman Reynolds' questions, there will be a benefit to Costa Mesa, Costa Mesa residents, or the city itself, for lower rates. And I would assume, you know, all, you know, lower rates sounds positive, it's financially, spending less money, that's positive. One thing that kind of confuses me is if I opt into the total renewable and the neighbors who share my telephone, my power pole, don't, the wire, the electricity's coming over, electricity's coming over the same wire. So how do I know that's renewable, 100% renewable, or 72% renewable, or whatever? I think, I, I need, that needs to be explained. Also, this having a financial impact, I think this would be prime to be brought forward before Fight PAC. Whenever that analysis is done by the OCPA, I think it should be run by Fight PAC. And, interesting, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council and staff. I'm Craig Preston, I live a few blocks away here, and thrilled to have this on the agenda tonight, thank you. It's been years that we've been wanting to continue to make our city greener, love that we do with Earth Day and have a sustainability director, environmental charger stations out front that I use often. Thank you, thank you for your work on this. I'm so thrilled you had the CEO of OCPA come speak to you tonight to share some of the updates with OCPA. I'm really thrilled with how they've professionalized and grown that organization to make it more professional and smoother running. These aggregators are very popular across California and do great work, and I'm glad we're considering it here for Costa Mesa. A few weeks ago, I called Southern California Edison and said, "I'd like to go 100% renewable, how do I do that?" And they said, "Well, we have a program for it, but it's a waiting list." In fact, a waiting list that goes on for a long, long time. And so, yes, they can say they have renewables as an offering, but it's a big, long waiting list. I'd like to be on a 100% renewable rate, but I don't have that choice right now. I said to my boss today, "I'm going to go speak to city council about getting 100% renewable, because I don't have a choice right now." And he says, "You do have a choice, you could move." I could move. But I'd like to stay in Costa Mesa, and I'd like to incentivize businesses to come here. I know my company sells around the world, and we get asked, you know, "What is the carbon content of the electricity your company uses?" I'd like to be able to say that it's cleaner, and that we can get more business even here in, here in California, in, in our city. As a conservative, I also just am thrilled that President Nixon was a champion for the Clean Water Act, the Clean Air Act. I'd like us to be champions for the Clean Energy Act here in Costa Mesa, and make it so that both sides of the political spectrum understand there's conservative and liberal solutions, and this one has a lot of sense, and has a lot of our values of just a clean, affordable, reliable electric solution. I'm looking forward to the efficiency we would get out of this and would benefit our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Tom Hazeliff, and the reason we're here even discussing this tonight is the effect of our use of fossil fuels on our climate and our health. You know, a Harvard study found that 1 in 10 deaths in the United States is caused by the use of fossil fuels. The OCPA proposes a cleaner, cheaper electricity, or if you prefer, a clean, totally clean electricity, that it costs you about $6 a month more than the filthy power you're getting from Edison. One other thing that this would allow is, a lot of people that would, would like to have solar panels on their roof, like, like I've got, but they can't. Either they're in a location that's not conducive because of the trees, shade from buildings, or they rent, or they're in a condo, that it's not possible. So the only way that they can get clean energy is through something like this. It looks to me like a win-win situation. It reminds me a lot of the credit union I use, that is founded for the benefit of the customers, unlike the, the bank that I got rid of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I don't see anybody else coming up in the council chambers. Is there anybody on Zoom that wants to address this one?
Yes, Jennifer Tanaka, please.
Ms. Tanaka, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening, Council. Thank you for your time, this is an interesting issue. The reason I think it's interesting is that I, as some of you guys might know, am a corporate attorney, and I've definitely dealt with a lot of M&amp;A and major transactions like that, and I don't think I've ever, in my tenure career, relied on the due diligence or feasibility study done by a counterparty. I think that's just an interesting idea here, that OCPA, who I think, you know, is interested in getting more customers, who wouldn't, that they would do a feasibility study for us, and we would put any amount of reliance on that. It's just interesting, I feel like we should be doing our own due diligence, either in-house or bringing on people who can, because, you know, I think OCPA provides a really compelling case here for their services, but we don't have any countervailing points. A few things I just want to throw out there, just based on the discussion, was first, you know, if the city of Costa Mesa were the customer here, I think that would be one thing, but I think we should keep in mind that the customers that we would be signing up to this will be the Costa Mesa ratepayers, the actual residents, on the, in an individual, on an individual basis. I would also put on the ledger that this is an opt-out program. In other words, if we were to become members, we would automatically be signing up every resident to this, they would have to then opt out. So I think that's something to just, you know, keep in mind, that that's, hasn't really been discussed. I also just wanted to quickly reference the credit rating was discussed. I don't think that they have one yet that helps them get to better bond financing, for example, which helps to give you, obviously, better financials, but they're not there yet, so I do question whether or not this is the right timing for this item. So, and lastly, I just want to put out there that SB 100 requires all utilities to go to 100% renewable by 2045. So I understand the acceleration sort of argument that this will get there faster, but I think we're all going to be required to get there at the end anyway, so I just wonder if it really makes sense. So just wanted to put that out there. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we'll close public comment, and at this point, one of the council members wants to make a motion, Councilmember Harland, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Harland.
Thank you, yes. I move staff's recommendation with the addition that whatever report we get back is reviewed and hopefully a recommendation issued by Fight PAC.
I'll second.
Okay, do you have anything to say in support of your motion?
I do. So I'm glad this is before us, you know, obviously, as the mayor mentioned, sustainability is a core value here. We've done a number of things in that arena. I spent the better part of, the first part of my career focusing on sustainability policy and green buildings, I'm familiar with this field, and I'm glad we are considering it tonight. I think this is a, a good first step, but what was made abundantly clear to me by Mr. Moska is that the feasibility study is largely for the benefit of OCPA, to determine if we are a good fit. And I think this is a worthwhile effort to go down that road. But the second question that we actually have to consider for our community, and I think it was pointed out by some of the speakers recently, is that this is all about our ratepayers, and whether or not the program makes sense for them. So I'm willing to, to take that leap now, but I think that we should have some significant analysis done once we do get back the feasibility study. I'm sure we'll have some, some questions, both from the council, but also this is why I wanted to go to Fight PAC, because I think they have some expertise in evaluating this, and I think Mr. Taboda read my mind, because that's the place where we should consider these kinds of very specific issues.
Councilmember Chavez?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. I agree with Mayor Protem Harland's motion. I think it's obviously a very enticing opportunity we have in front of us for our residents, that we can not only save them money, and I keep saying that, because that's where my focus primarily is, but also be a bit ahead of the curve in terms of renewable energy. Obviously, at some point in the near future, in 40 years, roughly speaking, 35, we will all have renewable energy, but getting a leap is important for a lot of reasons. But for me, the biggest one is the financial savings. And with that, I cannot be blinded by the savings, I also need to make sure we do our due diligence. So I think going through Fight PAC is prudent, they're our body that looks at not only our budget, but our savings. If we deem that it's not the best fit for us, then we don't move forward. But I think in this climate, in this day and age, with how much people are struggling to afford necessities like rent, food, it is our obligation to, where we can, explore options and save money for our residents. So I think this is a fair motion that preserves our ability to make sure this is the right thing for our residents. It's a good motion, because we move forward with OCPA, and we can see if it works out on their end, and also if it benefits us. So, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Harper?
Thank you, Mayor. Three things, I can remember them. You know, I, I would like to know why Huntington Beach backed out, why the County of Orange backed out, and I don't think it's fair to just call something political. It doesn't, it's like calling me a Republican and saying I vote a certain way. It's just not, it's not fair. It doesn't tell me why. I mean, I'm reading, why they backed out was because the residents wanted out, and it was a cost issue. So, again, and I don't know, I don't know for sure all the details, I just know what I'm reading on the internet. And to that point, the, the substance of what the decision you're making, or would make in this instance, is how well the Orange County Power Authority buys and is run. That is ultimately what translates into the cost of the ratepayer. I'm glad you agree with me, Joe, and it's not critical, Joe agrees with me, thank you. How well it's run, and how well it's executed. It hasn't executed well in the past by the things I've read. That includes, I think, a state audit, some other things. So I hope it's better. I do agree with some council members that mentioned that, you know, feasibility stunt, done, feasibility study done by you is not independent, and that it's like how Verizon telling me, "Here's my data, decide whether I should be your customer or not," so it's a little bit, a little bit skeptical. The last thing I'll say about, and I've been 35 years in the energy industry, in the petroleum sector, in the fossil fuel sector, the policy that we've seen in our nation, the, the transition to renewable and green energy, has been a large part of why we have inflation, and the inflation we have, and why people can't afford things. And it's a big deal, and it translates to all your goods and services. And so I always want to caution us to be careful when we head down these paths, to try and encourage renewable, which I'm not against, I, the company that I run, we're 95% renewable diesel. So we've embraced it, but there's a cost to it, there's a cost to the consumer for it, and, but it's the path our states let us down, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Gamaros?
Yes, thank you. A couple of things that I would, I would like to, to know is, what is Edison, what's Edison, Southern California Edison's position on this? You know, when, when the statements are made, we can go 100% renewable? How do I know that it's, you know, there's not like a little green light that goes on in my house every time 100% renewable is getting piped into my living room? Is there even 100% renewable energy out there to supply whatever the city of Costa Mesa uses, 100,000 kilowatts an hour, or whatever it is? We really don't know, we have to take someone out their word that, yep, you're getting 44% renewable energy coming into this community, other than, well, we bought 44%, and it's coming from some wind farms over in Palm Springs, or whatever it is. It, it would be very interesting to see how we get to those numbers, and how exactly the infrastructure works to bring that in. And speaking of infrastructure, you know, Edison doesn't just push electricity into our community, they also maintain the grid. So to say we're purchasing electricity from an organization that says, "Yeah, we don't, we don't maintain the grid, we just buy it," well, something's not adding up when, you know, it's kind of like we have a middleman that we don't need. But I'm, I'm willing to see this thing through, and I'm going to be very skeptical, I'm just going to let you know right now, I'm extremely skeptical of this. I would like to see how this whole thing works. I don't really have a, a vision on it, I can't see it, other than numbers on paper. I would really like to know what role is being played in bringing this energy into our community, and how we arrive at those numbers. So that's all I have.
Okay, for my part, I think, you know, I really want to thank the council for expressing themselves and asking good questions, and basically preparing the OCPA for what they're going to see in the second round of this. I support the motion, I think it's pretty, a kind of a no-brainer to at least get past the next point. There is going to be some scrutiny, there should be some scrutiny. There was, you know, were some issues in terms of management at the very beginning, and, you know, you did a really nice job, and, and I get a good feeling from you, but I mean, I think those are legitimate questions that are, that you should be, expect to be asked about how it has changed. And then the other thing that hasn't been discussed, and I'm not asking you to discuss it now, but be prepared, is the idea of governance. When we looked at this in 2020, one of the issues that some of the council members had is that Irvine had a disproportionate, you know, influence, because they had two members of the board. I'm wondering? I'm wondering if there's been reduction in that because of, you know, if more people, more cities get in, if that creates a dilution or equalization or whatever, and how that's worked out in practice. I'm on, I mentioned OCTA. I'm also on the TCA. TCA is Joint Powers Authority. OCTA, I'm not even sure what it is, but it's been around for a long time, and it's merged like a bunch of agencies together. But generally speaking, on those boards, there's not a lot of contested votes, you know, but sometimes there are. And when there are, it's usually one of my motions. And so it, the government's aspect, governance aspect could matter, and I'm sure you're going to get questions about that. So like, great discussion, great job, council. You're prepared for the next step, and I support the motion. Let's call for the question. Oh, sorry, council, I didn't see your light. Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, I just want to add to that. You actually covered some of the points I wanted to make about the history. You know, we, I think the team at OCPA knows we chose, we chose not to join a few years ago in the founding because we saw some of the, we were concerned about some of the leadership at the time and lack of experience at the time. I don't recall if you mentioned this, but I know that the sort of the new leadership team is taking the agency through this 10-point improvement plan, which I encourage you to share with the council as well. I think it's really helpful to, to show, you know, the difference between now from the past. Also, this, you know, I've mentioned other CCAs in the state who have just really good models of what the opportunity is. And so obviously, I 100% agree that we should move forward on this analysis. We don't even know if we're invited to the sandbox. I think we will be because we're, you know, a pretty normal city in terms of our load. I think it's going to be pretty predictable in terms of what, well, that we would be a good customer, given our residential base and our commercial base. It sounds like we were invited to sort of share some of the questions that we may have because the data that we're releasing, we would be releasing here is data that would help answer some of the questions. So I'll certainly put those together, the questions I would want to have as a council member in terms of my decision-making in the future. And I know that we've had, obviously, we have an extremely experienced financial team on our staff here in Costa Mesa. We applaud you all regularly. I know you will be digging into this as well. And something that we can pursue in the future if we need to is pulling in some, you know, expert advisors in, in the energy space who will have the experience to do the analysis from our side. I'm not sure. I think the look by Five Pack is valuable from a resident perspective. I'm not sure there's the energy industry experience on Five Pack to do that analysis in the way we would want our staff to do that analysis. So I, yeah, again, so I would encourage us to, to council members in the meantime, over those, I think it was 15 or 18 weeks, get educated on, on the model, the 10-point plan, but also other CCAs and the benefits that they provide their community. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, let's call for the question.
Motion carries 5-1 with Councilmember Harper voting no.
Okay. All right. You guys want to knock out the last two? All right. New business item number two.
Option to lease agreement to construct and operate a 70-unit affordable senior and supportive housing project located at the city senior center at 695 West 19th Street. Presentation by Mr. Mendez, senior planner.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Before we give our staff presentation, I want to introduce a new face to the council, to the specifically to the Development Services Department and the Planning Division, Victor Mendez. He's senior planner, who is our second still from the city of Irvine in the last six months.
So you, how long have you been here?
Just over three months.
Three months? All right. Well, welcome to the, it's your first time presenting at the council meeting. Welcome, relax, we're cool. So you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Stevens and council members. The item before you tonight is an option to lease agreement for a proposed mixed-use project with senior housing located at 695 West 19th Street. The property is located within the 19th West Urban Plan and is also the current site of the Costa Mesa Senior Center. The applicant of the proposed project is Jamboree Housing Corporation. A quick background on the proposed project. In July 2020, the city council approved an exclusive negotiating agreement with Jamboree Housing in order to explore affordable senior housing on a portion of the city senior's parking lot. This site was identified in the city's housing element as potential location for affordable housing development. The conceptual project presented to the council at the time was a new detached two-to-three-story building with 60 affordable senior units. Despite a one-year initial term including a 120-day extension, the exclusive negotiating agreement expired in 2022. Since the time of the ENA approval, Jamboree Housing and city staff have met regularly to refine the proposed project. And most recently, on February 2024, we conducted a project screening, and the city council endorsed the project's progress and suggested exploring increased density. The project then gained momentum in the spring when Jamboree Housing formally submitted their master plan application, which is currently under review by staff. The current proposal entails a four-story building with 70 units targeting income levels from 30% to 60% of the area median income. This includes 34 units designated as supportive housing for seniors. So at this moment, Jamboree Housing is actively competing for project-based vouchers through a notice of funding availability issued by the County of Orange. They are seeking 34 project-based vouchers crucial to their project's financial feasibility and to leverage additional funding aimed at serving low-income seniors. A key requirement for the PVV application is demonstrating site control, and Jamboree Housing cannot demonstrate site control since the ENA has expired. So as a result, Jamboree Housing is pursuing this option to lease to satisfy this requirement pending a fully negotiated ground lease, which requires city council approval. Before the option to lease expires on October 31st, the goals are to finalize and agree that on the terms and conditions of the affordable housing agreement and also obtain approval from the city council. The timeline shown on this slide is the applicant's proposed timeline for funding, construction, and leasing. Staff supports the option to lease agreement as it will enhance the city's housing stock, particularly by offering affordable housing options for seniors, as this aligns closely with the city's housing element, reinforcing our commitment to meeting the diverse housing needs of the community. This concludes staff presentation. The applicant and staff are available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Counselor, do you have any questions of Mr. Mendez?
I do.
Yes. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you for that presentation. Can you go back to the schedule for one quick second?
Yes.
It was the last slide. So Exhibit B in the agreement is the terms of the affordable housing agreement, which still has yet to be finalized. And there's a reference to the closing date, and sorry for getting in the weeds on this, but I want to make sure we're clear on timing here. The closing date, 180 days after Jamboree Housing has received written binding commitments for financing. So my, my question is, at what point will the parties, the city and Jamboree Housing, negotiate that final affordable housing agreement?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we actually are in the process of doing that. We provided Jamboree our preferred form of AHA, Affordable Housing Agreement, about two years ago. It's my understanding that they are working on it. Obviously, some of the provisions are more standard in terms of how they're required to track and enforce the affordability of the, of the units. Other provisions are subject to negotiation, and so we may be having to come back to you before we can get that finalized.
Okay. So, Ms. Barlow, then where on the schedule will we be looking that? So I'm assuming Q2 2025, that's the application. I don't know, maybe the Jamboree Housing needs to respond to when we would expect financing to be committed. But is that also the only financing that's required? I mean, my understanding, there's multiple financing sources.
There are multiple financing sources. Tax credits are one of them. This is the, but, but there are others. And one of those may be an effort to seek a loan of housing funds. So we will be bringing that back to you. That has to be finalized at or about the same time as any lease for the site, so that would fall prior to the start of construction in this timeline.
Okay. I mean, and if it sounds like I'm asking about a lot of different things at the moment, it's because I just want to make sure we've got a clear path for the applicant moving forward. Council has clear expectations. Also need to incorporate the entitlement approvals in all of this.
Yes.
So, you know, if we can do this as efficiently as possible, where we consider not just entitlements, but maybe it's entitlements and then quick order the other operating agreements, we do that so we don't have too much lag between them.
Our goal would be to have it really come forward as a kind of a package deal with full environmental analysis, all the financial analysis, all of the documentation, and then present it to you as one package.
Okay. Perfect. That's all my questions.
Okay. I'm sorry, sorry if you answered this. So, and maybe this is for the applicant, but, so it says demonstration of site control critical to project-based voucher applications. So can, in, you know, really simple terms, can somebody, could be the applicant, could be staff, explain why we need to do this particular vote in order to enable Jamboree Housing to move forward with project-based voucher applications? Mayor, I'll let the applicant answer that question. Yeah.
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, okay. I'm Tish Kelly. I'm the senior vice president of development over at Jamboree Housing, so I can answer these questions. So we've got the option to lease. The ENA originally negotiated and that we had, it, it doesn't actually qualify as a binding document for site control for these financial applications, but the option to lease does. And so there are specific documents that would represent and demonstrate site control, that we actually have control of the site that we're applying for financing for, and that's a threshold requirement for these different financing sources, including when we go to the county and we apply for project-based vouchers.
Got it.
Okay.
And so you have site control, but we haven't done the AHA. What is, is that right?
Yeah.
And so by giving you this, and you can't exercise the option until we do the AHA?
So we're, and Ms. Barlow can also weigh in here, but, so we're, the option to lease agreement is really the bare bones agreement that we can engage in to demonstrate site control, but it, it leaves a lot of the negotiations to the future document that'll be memorialized in the Affordable Housing Agreement, and then the ground lease, which is the document that'll take plate, take the place of this option to lease agreement that'll be much more heavily negotiated, that will come in front of you again to, to look at. So the Affordable Housing Agreement and the ground lease agreement are in process of being negotiated, and this option to lease agreement takes us out to, I believe, October 31st, which is by that time, we would like to have all of the documents completed. And we're also already into entitlements for the second round based off of council's previous direction for the, for the design changes and recommendations.
Okay. So this is kind of just like a, like a placeholder that allows you to qualify for the project-based voucher funding?
That's correct.
Got it. All right, thanks. Any other questions from council? Okay, let's open it up to the public. Nope. Oh, Bob, take your time.
Well, you all know, my major interest in things is the homeless. And one of the things that helps end homelessness is housing. Build housing, affordable housing. The last point in time count numbers show that, show that a 21% increase in homelessness aged 62 and older. We need senior housing. Thank you.
Well said. Okay. Anybody on Zoom wish to address this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Close public comment. All right. I'll make a motion to approve the staff recommendation and move forward with this option to lease.
I'll second.
Good. All right. No, I think it's important to provide the applicant every opportunity to do the financing and obtain the money and the project-based vouchers. They need to be successful to keep, keep our ability to develop this property into, into senior housing. So I agree with Bob. Well said, concise, awesome. And so that's all I have to say.
I will only add to Santa Bob's pithy and poignant comment that, looking at this timeline and looking at the agreement, we entered into the ENA with Jamboree Housing in May of 2021. This looks like a lease-up completion towards the third quarter of 2028. Seven years to get seven units of senior housing. It's by no fault of the applicant nor the city, but we need to do a lot better to accelerate housing. It's as simple as that.
Here, here. Anybody else? Let's call for the question.
Motion carries 5-0.
Right. Good work. We have one last new business item, new business item number three. Madam Clark, would you please read the title?
Approval of Proposed Design Improvements for Ketchum-Liebold Park. Presentation by Mr. Coward, Community Relations Manager.
Okay. So. So, Mr. Coward, this looks like pretty much a pretty robust presentation. If you want to, if you want to streamline it, you're invited to do so.
I love this newfound power, but let me defer to Mr. Yang on this. So, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council, so we can just do a brief presentation, try to go through it as expeditiously as possible, given that situation here. So Brock, should I take this position?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor and honorable members of the city council. So what have you, what we have before you is the presentation on Ketchum-Liebold Park for the approval of the design for this particular project. So I'll just try to give a brief presentation, and after my presentation, Mr. Brock Coward, our Community Relations Manager, will also go over his part of the presentation. And finally, we'll have our consultant from Arciterra, Ms. Kay Kite, also present, present as well with respect to the design elements. So, so a little bit brief background on this project, Ketchum-Liebold Park. It's located at 2150 Maple, Maple Street, here in the great city of Costa Mesa. This particular park was constructed back in August of 2005 as a tribute to the following Costa Mesa police officers, James Dave Ketchum and John Mike Liebold, whose lives were at risk. were tragically lost in a helicopter crash back on March 10th of 1987. It's a small park. It's within an area of less than half an acre, approximately 0.34 acre. But despite its small size, includes a robust playground seating area, benches, turf, and a concrete pad that's used by the city's mobile recreation van. So a little background on the funding sources, the funds were received through State Assembly Member Cadi Petri Norris in the amount of 1.2 million for the Ketchum-Liebold upgrades and recreation amenities. Other funding sources that have been allocated through, by the city council is 1 million from the Capital Improvement Fund and approximately 250,000 from the Prop 68 per capita grant. So altogether, we're looking at 2.5 million that's allocated for Ketchum-Liebold Park upgrades. So in terms of the preliminary design consultant selection, the city contracted in 2023 with Pat West LLC and also City Fabric to conduct several community outreach meetings for the major park upgrades. The preliminary park design options and renderings were discussed with Parks and Community Services, or known as PAX Commission, back us on August 10th, 2023. City staff conducted comprehensive requests for proposals, which at that time, the city council awarded to the design group Architerra back on January 16th of 2024 as a consultant to provide design services for the Ketchum-Liebold Park upgrades project. So we also, one last thing, we also went to the PAX Commission back on June 27th, and said commission also approved the coastal design element and also the first responders' theme during that meeting. So with that, I'll transfer over to Mr. Brock Coward for the community outreach and engagement.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protown, and council members. I'm Brock Coward, Community Relations Manager, and it's my pleasure to give you a little bit of information about our outreach and engagement around this park, which, as Sung mentioned, actually goes back more than a year in our efforts to reach the community and make them part of this process. As was mentioned, and I'll be brief, initial community engagement occurred with Pat West and with City Fabric in May and June of 2023. There were three pop-up events, two at the park itself and one at Love Costa Mesa event in which surveys were taken and feedback was then used as the foundation for the RFP that went out in selecting park design, park designers. The survey feedback, briefly, the highlights of that were better visibility and lighting. As you know, there's a wall that cuts down visibility in this park, more grass, less concrete, functional space for families to gather and picnic. Swings and climbers were also some of the things that children wanted to see, larger play structure, area and larger play structures, and more shade, of course, for this area, and that's a common theme we see with our parks. We came back to the community on May 8th, 2024 with a community workshop at the park and some of the outreach and engagement that took place. We established a project website. And this, by the way, before I go into this, is a group effort with our PIO, Tony Dodero, the constituent services team, and our park staff. So I appreciate all the work that went into it with this group for outreach and engagement. As I was saying, the project website was established and will be continued to be maintained throughout this project. We canvassed the neighborhood, knocking and talking to residents, letting them know about the park, letting them know that we were back in the area to discuss and bring back some of their choices from the previous year and that we wanted to hear from them again on some of the various options that were being provided to them. We went to our community partners and shared, asked them to share flyers throughout the community, that would be a Glacier Harbor Church, Soy, and Wilson Learning Center. We also partnered with the school district to inform parents at the neighborhood school, Wilson Elementary. Of course, we posted flyers at the Ketchum-Liebold Park and nearby businesses, and there were multiple posts on social media and e-notifications for the larger community to also participate. And then after the meeting, we also made sure to go out to the community and leave door hangers, letting them know about their options for a park survey and to stay informed through the project update page. We'll continue, as I said, informing residents and anyone who's interested in this particular project through our project update page. And that concludes my part of the presentation. Let me turn it back over to Mr. Yang.
Okay, thank you very much, Brock. So we have with us Ms. Kate Kite, she's up here at the podium.
Excuse me. You gotta turn your mic on.
Sorry, my apologies.
All good.
So we have up here at the podium, Ms. Kate Kite. She represents Architerra. She's responsible for the conceptual design, or her firm is responsible for all the conceptual design and also the coordination with city staff and also with other members as well in terms of providing us with this design concept. So go ahead, Kate.
Okay, Architerra was brought on. We met with the city and we were given the surveys of what the community wanted and talked with the city on what they were looking for for the park. And taking this and going out to the park site and seeing what was out there, we developed two different concepts. Both of these concepts take out the wall between the residences to the east out to Maple Street and push the park further towards the street, expanding the play area and the turf area. It incorporates that landscape area in front of the residences to the east as kind of a passive walking garden, either a native garden or a butterfly garden. We're keeping a paved area to the north for the mobile recreation van, and both options have a shaded seating area next to that mobile recreation van area. And we're moving the entry arch to the corner so it welcomes in the residents to the south as well as the west and to the north. The differences between these two parks is option number one, we went more with an eagle theme based on the eagle-to-call sign for officers Ketchum and Liebold, but we pushed it into more of a nature-type theme. You see the play areas at the corner. There's two different play areas. The one further north is for the smaller children, two to five years, and the one closer to the corner is for the older children, five to 12 years. The turf area is pushed over to the residences to the east, and back in the back corner, we have kind of a nesting seating area. And there's additional shaded seating areas near the corner and in front of the play area. The option two, we named it the coastal theme because of the waves you can see in the play matting. The turf has moved towards the corner and the play area has moved away from the corner. And when the play area moved away from the corner, we took some shaded seating with it. So you have some shaded seating near the play area and some shaded seating near the turf. And both of these options also include a combination of low and high fencing so that we don't have any children or mentally impaired adults running into the streets. We presented these two options to the community on May 8th, and the first thing we asked them to do is pick which layout they preferred regardless of the theme. And overwhelmingly, you can see that the community wanted the option where the play area was pushed to the back and the turf area was closer to the front. Next, we asked them to choose a theme to go with their park, gave them a few options, nature and garden, oceans, and again overwhelmingly, police and first responders. And they also liked a whimsical or kind of a more loose theme where it wasn't so structured. So because we also know that the police and theming for this park is very important to the council members and the police themselves, we're definitely going to keep the theming and kind of blend it in with the whimsical portions of the park. We also asked the community to choose what they wanted in their playground. They preferred slides, some movement, spinners and swings, not really that okay with the net play or the sensory walls. We asked them what else they wanted in their park. They really liked the idea of the butterfly garden, definitely wanted some integrated shade in the play area with the play structure and just one shade over it all. And they still liked the animals and insects, they just didn't want the entire park to be nature-themed. We presented them with this materials board showing what kind of materials could be in the park, the different shades structures, including your fabric sails or a metal structure with a punched design in the top. We have a mosaic in the paving where the mobile recreation van can park, so when it's not there, it's not just a big concrete pad. And these are our two fencing options. We have the low fencing in the, around the play area. See, it's a two-barrel steel fencing with a mesh to make it a little more decorative, but it's only like 42 inches tall, so it doesn't look like it's enclosing the park. But in the grass areas where you have the possibility of balls popping up and out of the park, we've added these arches on top to give it more height while still making it more of a decorative feature. Based on our feedback, we decided that the best option to move ahead with was the option number two, which was originally called the coastal option. With a couple of adjustments, we still have the arch at the corner. It's a little off-center to preserve mature trees at the corner. We've added boulders along the streetscape due to concerns from the residents about out-of-control cars entering the park, and the boulders are there to either slow them down or hopefully stop them before they make it into the park. We still have that paved area up north for the mobile recreation and the shaded seating next to it. And of course, the play area is in the back, and we've added a nature area to the corner where there'd be concrete sculptures of animals and insects and logs that the children can interact with. And it also keeps this corner from just becoming old and forgotten. It keeps it activated so people don't end up camping out there. One thing I will point out is the play equipment shown on this particular rendering is a standard play equipment. We are working with a manufacturer for a custom design that incorporates the police theme, as we've talked about, and when we get that design, we'll be adjusting the surfacing to match it from above.
Thank you, Kate, very much. So in conclusion, staff presented this to the PAX Commission back on June 27th of this year. The motion was to accept the coastal design option with a police and first responder theme. In addition, the Ketchum-Liebold Park project upgrades has been in the making for quite a few years and is finally coming to fruition. So both the city and the community will be looking forward to this park's new renovation. And finally, this park, Ketchum-Liebold Park, will continue being a great part of the community, serving nearby residents with abundance of recreational amenities. So that comes to the end of our presentation, and staff is more than happy to entertain any questions. Thank you.
Any questions, council?
I have a few, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, staff, and to designers of this park. Excited to see it kind of come to fruition. It was one of the first things I pushed for in the city council, so it's cool seeing it come to this point. I have only two questions. One is how quickly after we assume we vote yes on this will we see construction?
Councilmember Chavez, once the design has been approved and once the specifications and plans have been completed, then staff will start with construction. So in terms of timeframe, we're looking at the beginning of 2025.
Perfect. And my last question is, when will we anticipate construction will end?
We anticipate for a project of this magnitude roughly six to eight months.
Okay.
So that's looking at our timeframe in terms of, from beginning to completion.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of questions. The first one, probably pretty predictable. Where do people park their bikes?
So I think we have in the audience, Mr. Brendan Tensio-Thomas, and I think he would be better suited to answer that question.
And I, maybe if I can add on, I'm curious also, I'm seeing more and more and more parents with, you know, with their one or two or three kids even on the e-bikes. I think there's a name for them, but the bikes that have the whatever seats for them. And so I'm curious also if there's a, is there like a different bike rack design for smaller, normal bikes versus the larger e-bikes, too?
Yeah, sure. Great question, Councilmember Reynolds. So once the design is completed, you know, pending council approval, we would begin looking at locations for bike racks. Most likely on the corner would probably be the best place, but we'd have to look at the design. And we can certainly develop a bike rack scheme that allows for the parking of various sizes of bikes, including electric bicycles.
Okay, great. So them not being in this design, I was definitely looking for them, doesn't mean there's not a plan. There absolutely would be a plan to incorporate that.
That's correct.
Perfect, okay, great. And then the other question I had was about, it's just a sort of, you know, we're taking down the wall to, that separates the current park from Victoria, which totally agree with to expand the park footprint. Victoria's noisy, right, and speedy. I asked staff for some data, and apparently, even though the speed limit on Victoria is 40 miles an hour, which is still nutty fast, the average speed, the average speed is 44 miles an hour, and we know, you know, anyone gets hit at 40 miles an hour, like you're dead. So how are we dealing with this sort of interface, both in terms of safety on Victoria and then just like sound mitigation?
On the safety side, the city is currently pursuing federal grant funding for Victoria Streets Active Transportation Improvements project.
Oh, great.
That would be part of a larger west-side safe system improvements, and that would include pedestrian, bicycle, and traffic coming elements.
Okay. That was, and that's a distinct project, of course. Okay.
Pending grant approval.
And then are we concerned about the noise? Sort of discomfort from the noise from cars moving at 40 miles an hour?
Right, so Councilmember Reynolds, the staff will look into what mitigation attempts that we can do in terms of the noise. And also, Ms. Kate Kite can probably add to that as well.
Yeah, I'm sure there's some park design strategies for that, too.
Yeah.
There are, unfortunately, we're a little limited because we want to keep the visibility into the park, and 90% of your noise attenuation cuts visibility as well because it's a solid barrier. So it's kind of a trade-off between the noise from the traffic and being able to see into the park. And the residents definitely communicated to us that they're more concerned with being able to see into the park than the noise from Victoria Avenue.
Got it, okay. That makes sense. Those are my questions. Thanks.
I have just a couple of questions. So if you go back to the, people go back to the very first slide, the opening, you know, whatever, the very, very first one, it's, it's... Okay, there you got it. Okay. Oh, wait, wait, you had it. The very first slide. No, just the photo. This, there you go. Okay, so if you go in there, you've got the, it looks like a little plaque, and presumably that has some information about Dave Ketchum and Mike Liebold on the thing? And so I'm wondering a couple things. Number one is, have we talked to the Ketchum and Liebold families about this design? I know Dave is Mike Liebold's son, and I know, I play golf with him from time to time, and I know he's got a sister, Katie, yeah. Have we talked to the families about what they think? And also, have we talked about, you know, doing something, kind of incorporating a more, you know, full memorial that talks about, more about them as individuals and the incident, maybe some education that took their lives, some educational information for the community about the PD and specifically them, you know? Because while I know that this is obviously something that, it's a first responder and police theme, but it's really about two specific police officers who lost their lives in the line of duty. So I want to make sure that they're brought in and their families are brought into this process.
Understood. As far as my knowledge, I don't think we've done any kind of specific outreach, but I'll have Ms. Kite to maybe clarify if during her design, if any kind of outreach was done.
We've got, I mean, I'm sure Lawrence got...
We'd be happy, we'd be happy to get together with the family and bring them up to speed on the design, have them, you know, make some comments and feedback if they'll do. That's a fantastic idea. We'd be happy to work with them to make sure that they feel involved and understand the meaning and significance of even these design elements that are an honor to them because so much of it is police-related. We'd be happy to do that, Mayor.
Yeah, and if there's any tweaks that need to come out of that meeting and in particular, like there's, you know, there's nothing wrong with a plaque like that, but I mean, you know, that was done a long time ago, 2005, so we may be able to upgrade the memorial piece. Okay?
Okay, thanks.
That's my only comment. Do you have anything?
Yeah, just real quick, just reach out to me. I still talk infrequently to both of the Liebold children, so I can have a communicate and make that happen.
All right, good stuff. Any, should we open it up to the public? Let's open it up to the public.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm one of those two residents who don't live in District Four that requested bathrooms be installed in this park. The staff report mentions, well, it didn't come up at the outreach meetings, and this is going to sound negative, I don't mean it negatively, but staff always has home court advantage on designs. Design is put out there, it doesn't include a bathroom. Design is put out there, it doesn't include a bathroom. Many times, residents don't necessarily think about it because if it's not in the initial design or the preliminary design, they don't think about it. And that happens all the time. Things coming up tonight were raised, weren't in the design. The other thing is, the staff report implied, well, if there is a bathroom, it's going to take up space, limit the space to enjoy this park. Well, I would maintain that this park is, you know, it mentions that there's an area for younger children and an area for older children. So that's your clientele for this park, there's a lot of children. Well, obviously, children need bathrooms, so do adults, and I would maintain that if a child has to go to the bathroom, they're not going to be enjoying the park either. So I think that space would be well utilized to provide a bathroom. The other thing is, I'm going back 10 years. I do a lot of cycling. I cycle with a club. Sunday morning rides, we start at various locations, Tustin, Newport, South County, wherever. 10 years ago, we had a bike start. That Sunday morning ride started in Lyons Park. I go, that's great, short commute, starting in my city. Of course, we got there, it was 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning, Sunday morning, bathrooms are locked. Now, the other cities, bathrooms are open. Good thing is, at least there was a bathroom, but it was locked. So I went away, and I today say have the same thought as I did 10 years ago when this happened. Costa Mesa, second-class city when it comes to parks and availability, because all those other parks that we started at, whether it's Newport or Santa Margarita or Tustin or wherever, they had their bathrooms open. Number one, their park had a bathroom. This park proposed doesn't have a bathroom. Now, Victoria is a bike lane, designated bike lane. Also, it would help for cyclists, even though they may be traveling through the city, to have a bathroom available. It gives you a good impression about Costa Mesa if you have those facilities. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a few quick things about this park. If you live on Minor Street, at the end of Minor Street, the only way to get to this park would be walking a quarter of a mile up to Wilson and then a quarter of a mile back down towards Victoria. I think we should definitely be exploring the option to have a pedestrian cut through so that people can actually access this park easily and not have to walk 15 minutes out of their way in order to get to this park. Similar to the design feedback that Mr. Taboda gave about restrooms, which weren't in the plan before, I think noise at this park probably wasn't mentioned because if you're at an onsite meeting at Ketchum-Libel Park, you already have a wall there, you already know what it's like to have this noise mitigation. But once you remove that wall, you open up Victoria Street, which has these 44 mile-an-hour speeds. So I do think that it would be more important to have noise mitigation than the visibility in. If that's an issue, if people want to like make sure to, if police wants to make sure that there's no one in the park, I would recommend patrols, like within the park, using bike patrols. Those are simple and easy to do, and you can cover Joanne Street Trail as well, because I know like right now, for example, all the lights are out on the Joanne Street Trail, and that's something that can easily be caught with bike patrols. I agree that having a bike rack is very important, that will fit all different kinds of bikes since we see a lot of diversity in bicycle usage now. And finally, I will add that I'm a little bit concerned about both parks, well, Raleigh Park notwithstanding, both parks in District Four being offline for construction for six months, so maybe there's a way to like spread out the construction so that we don't have all of District Four without a park during the construction phase. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody on Zoom?
Cynthia McDonald, please.
Ms. McDonald, you have the floor.
Good evening, Cynthia McDonald, Costa Mesa.
Hold on one second, hold on one second, we're having trouble hearing you, so let's do a little test. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Better.
All right.
All right, that's just about right. Okay, hold on one second, let's make, don't talk yet, let's make sure you get your full three minutes. Okay, you can proceed.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening, Cynthia McDonald, Costa Mesa resident. The design for this park looks great, except for one thing, it's missing a restroom. The agenda report states that residents of the neighborhood near the park didn't request restrooms, perhaps they assumed that either a restroom would be included or they didn't realize one was a possibility. It doesn't appear from the suggested amenities that a restroom was one of the possible comforts presented to the residents. The improvements to this park are supposed to encourage use of the park and longer visits by families. Heightened use makes parts safer. There is a shaded picnic area, but where would you wash your hands before eating? It's not hygienic to use a drinking fountain for that. If we learn one thing from the pandemic, it's washing our hands with soap is important. Members of the City Council talk about the 15-minute city and how important the ease of access of work and food and schools and parks are, and how that's a part of creating a vibrant, healthy, sustainable community. Busy bike and bus routes run next to this park. Parks are often locations that cyclists, pedestrians, and bus riders look for when they need a pit stop. It's distressing to come to a park looking for a facility and learn there is none. Also, it's one thing for an adult to walk 15 minutes from a park to their home to use a bathroom. It's a whole different thing for a kid to do that. My closest park is Pollerino Park, which does not have a restroom. I won't take my grandson to that park because if he tells me, like he did at Fairview Park, "Mimi, I have a potty emergency," I'm not going to try to make it home because it's too far to schlep a four-year-old. I'm going, and I'm not going to teach him that going behind a bush is appropriate behavior. All that is required here is a single, non-gender restroom with a sink. In terms of maintenance, yeah, it's going to require somebody to unlock and lock the restroom, clean and supply it. The alternative will lead to a park that's not used, like Pollerino Park. Also, an absence of a restroom won't prevent people from pooping in the park. The presence of human waste diminishes the quality and the attractiveness of parks, and it takes an ecological toll on the environment, and while it may require maintenance, at least city staff will not have to be cleaning up feces and urine in a newly renovated park. Finally, this is about human dignity. No one enjoys having to relieve themselves in public. When nature calls, sometimes it's urgent. Water for irrigation and electricity is already part of this project. Please include one restroom and the bike racks as well. Thank you.
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Let's close a public comment. Councilmember Chavez, you have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. I want to move staff recommendation with the following additions. One, that we include Mayor Stevens' request to speak out to the families. Second, that we include Mayor Reynolds' request to add a bike rack and make sure that we have enough width in the gateway to include the e-bikes that have the carriages. And then, this is more of a soft request, but I want to add it to the motion, that staff talk to the residents of Minor Street to see if they're comfortable opening up their cul-de-sac, because my understanding was they chose to close it off back when I was growing up in the early 2000s.
Okay. That's your motion? So do you want to speak to the motion? Oh, it's seconded by Gamaros, by the way.
Perfect. Yes, first of all, quick thank yous in order. I want to thank staff for their apprentice work. Alma, Raja, Song, Yvis Robb, Sergio, Monique, you know, everyone part of the parks team, thank you for making this effort to make sure this park gets expanded in District Four. This was one of the first asks I had at City Council, and it really began as a simple ask. It was just, can we move the wall closer to the street to get a few more feet of grass? And along the way, we got support from Ustman Wurin and Cadi Pichinorris, who gave us some funding from the state, and we got a more robust project. For me, that's important because this park is so many things, this community. Not only is it a living memory for two fallen officers, officers Libel and Ketchum, but it's also a place the community to go that is in a very park-poor area. You know, we're doing a lot of good work on bike trails to get folks in West Side to green spaces, but the next best thing to do other than that is to expand these green spaces. I appreciate the suggestions to incorporate, you know, like public city theming, like eagle theming into this project, or in that memory. I appreciate how you guys went out of your way to incorporate the walking path next to the park into the project, because what we're doing now essentially is making this a statement piece for a bigger vision of Victoria Street, one where I imagine we'll have more bike lanes, more safety, more activation. And if I can be a bit bold, start looking at other parcels, like the one of Pomona and Victoria, to make more green space. I appreciate that we're lowering the wall so that folks can see it's a park and increase visibility for safety. I appreciate so much the effort we put into this and the commitment we made to the community to expand green space, and I hope this council supports this motion to bring new park to West Coast of Mesa.
Councilmember Gamaros.
Yeah, I too, I'm going to support. Councilmember Chavez is in the mayor's recommendations. I also want to add that when the opportunity for the constituents was offered at the park, I was there. I spoke with the community members, I interacted with them, I worked with staff on what the best options would be for this park, and what I can say is wholeheartedly that we're giving the community exactly what they asked for and nothing less. So I'm glad we have an opportunity to provide this. I'm glad staff was there to meet the needs of the community, and I'm glad this is going to be moving forward with everything that the constituents asked for, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Nice, well said. Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, I actually have a question, that I, on something that I just noticed. Police support the project, I think the team did an excellent job with the outreach and the thought in the design, but could we just pull up the aerial view of the, I think it's, doesn't have slide numbers, conceptual plan? I was just comparing that with an aerial review, and it struck a question that I want to understand. So, it's going to be hard to show that. So there's this kind of leg that comes out of the main park structure, that little leg on the right. When I look at the current aerial view, the sidewalk right now actually moves inward, and there's a concrete pad, which suggests to me that there's a bus stop there. Is the expectation that we're removing that concrete pad and moving the whole sidewalk? Because that's certainly what the design suggests.
Yes, actually, we are removing the concrete pad, and we have, when we started this design, it was expressed to us that that particular bus stop is being removed. It's no longer in service, and so they're going to remove the bus stop and straighten out that whole curb and sidewalk.
Okay, so this, this just occurred to me, it's something that I would actually like to raise to council. It, this, the leg shown here is just a wandering path. I don't know the reasons for removing bus service, but I know there's been sort of a trend in reducing service on the bus right now that we're trying to reverse. It's pretty expensive to put a concrete pad in the ground there for a bus stop, and a bus stop next to a park sounds like a really good thing. So my initial reaction to that is I'd oppose, you know, an expensive change to the infrastructure there that we might want to reverse in the future. So if that's not necessary, I'd suggest to council that we don't, that we kind of work the wandering path through the existing sidewalk structure. Yes.
Just to be clear, that bus stop has been inactive for quite some time, for a number of years, I think almost since I've been with the city, so it was deactivated quite a long time ago.
Okay. I'll reiterate, though, a bus stop near a park sounds like a valuable thing in terms of transportation for folks.
Can I also clarify one? The bus stop is actually not near the wandering path, it's actually right in front of the park, and if we left the bus stop in, that would push into the park and take out some of the grass and some of the play area as well, and it would actually shrink those areas.
Looking at the aerial here, the bus stop, the inlet is adjacent to the residential lot.
It actually moves right in front of both of them.
Are we able to bring that up on the screen? I mean, I don't know if council has a response, but my, I'm, it's an expensive change, right? It's very expensive. How can, it's very expensive to put those concrete pads in place, and, Councilmember Chavez, you even mentioned yourself the, you know, the interest in increasing bus transit. I think there is a really, a real need for that. I think that's, you know, forward-looking for the city, maintaining infrastructure to support bus transit, again, especially bus transit to public amenities like parks should be something that we are including in our priorities. So I'm just trying to find a balance here.
Where are, where are the bus stops in relationship to this park? Brendan, you know, Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, hi, thank you, guys.
It doesn't change the design that much.
Good, good question. So the Route 47 used to have a sub-route that ran along Victoria Street. During the fiscal year 2023, OCTA shakeup, that service was removed from Victoria Street. So now the Route 47 only operates along Wilson Street. There's no longer service on Victoria Street.
There's no service at all on Victoria?
There's no bus service, there's no city or, excuse me, OCTA bus service on Victoria Street. However, there is some Newport-Mesa Unified School District bus service still on the street.
Okay. Any, so, so I, why don't, excuse me, excuse me, for you two, Councilmember Chavez, Councilmember Reynolds, what you're saying is, I'm sure, really important, but why don't you say it on the microphone so we can hear what you're saying?
Yeah, first of all, well, I want to just acknowledge that, like, Councilmember Reynolds makes a good point, and not one that I'm trying to dismiss or anything, because it is important for us to have, you know, better bus access, and I stand by that. The thing that makes me uncomfortable with changing our design is that while the mayor is part of the OCTA board, he's one out of 17, I may be part of the CSAC, I'm one out of 34. It's going to be, I feel uncomfortable putting my faith and hope into an agency that we have a small piece of to bring back a service they have deemed they don't want to invest in. And furthermore, to that point, with the goal of bringing back the buses anyways, and advocating for that, most bus stops and streets do not have inlets. Most on Fairview don't, most on Harbor don't, and those are probably the two most utilized lines for OCTA, you know, 55 and 47. So for me, that seems like, well, well-intended, it is, I don't want to limit our own ability to create a longer-standing potential bike and pedestrian pathway to Victoria with this design, because my ultimate vision for Victoria is that we probably do narrow it, probably do have more protected bike lanes, and the whole corridor becomes a connectivity point to Placentia to go to Fairview and go to Reynolds Reserve down in Benning Ranch. So for that reason, I don't feel comfortable, but I do understand where it's coming from. It's a good place, but I think even without that addition, we can still have good, safe routes for buses and bikes.
So, does anyone, so I support the motion, I think it's good motion. I, I do want to go back and just say a little something about the bathroom issue. I'm okay with the motion the way it is and there not being a bathroom, however, this is an old topic for me, and I probably shouldn't be bringing it up, but I think that, I think that we do need to look at this issue that Ralph brought up, where, you know, the idea of public restrooms in a city is something that, you know, every city should have, and you guys have brought up, you and Cynthia, I mean, Ms. McDonald brought up a lot of good issues in that regard. I mean, I was just at Huntington Beach last weekend, and I'm very pleased that they had public restrooms at Huntington Beach. So I do think it's something we should pay attention to, and I do think that you made a very rational and good point, Mr. Taboda, about, you know, when you're on a bike, and, but I think that it, you want to have someplace to go, and, and, Ms. McDonald, I've been there, literally. I mean, I've had, I mean, I got four kids, I've taken kids to parks for years, and, you know, you struggle with that. Are you going to teach your kid how to pee behind a bush, or what are you going to do? Are you going to run them home? These are real, real issues that parents have, and I think we should, independent of this particular issue and this particular design, I support the... this particular issue and this particular design, I, I support the, the motion. We should look into whether or not, where do we stand with public restrooms in the city of Costa Mesa? And where do we, and it's a topic that was discussed a long time ago with, by me, but where do we stand, and where do we stand relative to other cities? And are we, are we serving the needs? And I say that in the most kind of fundamental Maslow's hierarchy ways. Are we serving the needs of our community in that regard?
Real quickly, because the reason why I didn't include it in the motion for transparency is just, I don't want to have more delays of redesigning and reconfiguring, something that I want to see done efficiently and quickly, but similar to me bringing up the idea of doing a moratorium on drive-throughs, I do think at some point, and I happen to do a motion, to bring border policy on restrooms to the public. Because I always remember your comments back in 2016 about, you know, people are going to go, as you said nicely, you know, hierarchy needs Maslow, we got to go, you got to go. So.
There are only three places in the world to go to the restroom. Every time you go, you go into one of three places. You either go in a public restroom, a private restroom, or outside. If you can think of a fourth place to go, you know, write me an email.
So, I support that.
Story.
I support the idea of bringing that back to a due and item for council.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, yes, Councilmember Reynolds.
Thanks, thanks for not calling me ma'am.
Yeah.
Yeah, so actually, this is, this was the reason I was sort of pouring into the, the aerial shot on here. I was wondering if, I mean, I totally agree, I don't, I don't want to delay any of this either. I was trying to see if there, if there might be space to, like, is, is there a small adjustment in the design that could create the space for a restroom in the future? And so maybe that's a question, I don't know if, if staff or the park designer looked at that.
May I suggest, I think I have a suggestion?
Yeah.
As Councilmember Chavez mentioned, we, we're kind of seeing this as the centerpiece of additional amenities and, and either pocket park development or a contiguous sort of program along Victoria as we secure additional funding. Would it be okay with the council if we say that as part of either a Phase Two or that larger effort, especially if we're talking about an active transportation program to and grant, that we consider the bathroom as part of that, so that we can move forward with this, but knowing that there is the need and there, at some point, along Victoria as we start to develop either, whether it's the, the parcel that you mentioned earlier, Councilmember Chavez, or something else along Victoria, because there's so much opportunity there with such a wide right-of-way that we give this some consideration as additional funds become available, and as we think about that corridor moving forward. So there's a lot of opportunity for active transportation and more trails. I mean, it's beautiful for that, it's ripe for that.
I'll, I'll tell you what, I feel like today I'm dreaming bigger than usual, and the, the fact that you mentioned that as Phase Two of your project makes me happy, so I think, yeah.
I mean, there's no money, but-
Obviously, but, but-
But we built this, we got this together, so I think I'm optimistic.
Yeah, but I think just hearing you guys have a vision of a bigger corridor to me brings me joy, and the idea that we can include the bathrooms, that bigger piece, and preserve this timeline, I'm happy to add to the motion, should, because we're Gamaros agree.
I, I do have something I'd like to say along those lines. If we are going to consider this, we should at least, in term, look at where this restroom would be, and during the construction phase, while we're doing this, we should look at the infrastructure aspect of this and look at what underground piping would be needed to pipe this in, whether we put the bathroom in now, five years from now, whatever it is. For us to dig up the park five years from now to put a unisex restroom when we could have piped it in now, and then all we got to do is pour a footing and ready to go. So if we're going to consider this, my first question would be, if someone could just rattle it off, how many square feet do we think a unisex restroom with a sink would be along, probably with a drinking fountain? And then what it would take to just put the utilities in for now, and on a later date, we would put a restroom in?
So city staff, because is that going to, again, the thing for me is the delay, is that going to cause a delay or create some kind of need to redesign?
Yes, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, a bathroom is costly, it's not an inexpensive thing. The smaller the bathroom, the less costly, but a bathroom, I mean, a three-stall could easily be a million dollars. It's the undergrounding, the infrastructure, that's the most expensive thing for sure. And so, yeah, it's not an inexpensive proposition. You know, we could look at some alternatives, and again, build this into maybe a Phase Two with additional funding and continue to look at the rest of the corridor. If, if you're really adamant about it being here, then that changes things. And it changes the cost, too. We'd have to cost it out.
Yeah, I think at this point, just for the community's sake, for our most park-poor part of town, let's not delay. But I think taking Councilmember Gamaros' approach into mind, I would look at Phase Two of the Victoria corridor with all the great things we can add to it. Let's look at where we can add restrooms.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Okay, so it's not, so what was the thing that you asked him to, if he wanted to second it just now? You said-
What I just said, if he's comfortable.
Yeah, okay. The idea is, is, is to just add it to the Phase Two, is to look into restrooms.
Totally fine.
Okay, so we, that's part of the motion. Madam Clerk, you got the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have anything more to say about the motion? Okay, let's call for the question.
Motion carries five zero.
Right, great job. The only thing we have now to do, good job, great job, staff, wonderful to have this park designed done, and, so let's adjourn.